The clerk will now read the warrant.
Good evening, everyone. This is the special town meeting, October 15th, 2018, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either constable of the town of Milford and said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the 15th day of October 2018 A.D., at 7:00 P.M., and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article 1, to see if the town will vote pursuant to general laws, Chapter 60, Section 62A, to adopt a new article.
Motion made in second with dispensing with the reading of the articles. Any voter care to be heard on the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense with the reading articles. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass., date September 19th, 2018. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in 10 or more public places in Milford. Thomas O'Laughlin, Police Chief. Thank you.
Just a reminder that any registered voter in the town of Milford has the right to address the meeting. In order to get recognized along with town meeting members, I'd ask you to raise your hand, stand, and yell "Mr. Moderator," and hopefully I'll see you and hear you. But you must be a registered voter in the town of Milford in order to address the meeting. If you're not a registered voter in the town of Milford, it would require the unanimous consent of the body to hear your presentation. And again, I would remind members that at the annual town meeting, we amended the speaker time. So it states that except with the consent of two-thirds of the town meeting members present in voting, initial presentation of articles by sponsors shall not exceed 10 minutes in total, whether presented by one individual or several. A vote to extend the presentation will be for another 10-minute period. And except with the consent of two-thirds of the town meeting members present in voting, no person addressing the town meeting for the first time on any article shall speak for more than five minutes. And subsequent statements or presentation by the same person shall not exceed three minutes each, nor exceed three in number. And then a speaker's concise response to a question directed to him, and it should be through the moderator, shall not be considered a speech for purposes of the standing vote. So we've got our clocks. Hopefully, we'll exercise it and not have to cut off anybody within those time limitations. So try to keep your presentations brief and to the point. And also remember, we're talking about the articles. We're not talking about individuals. And whether you like them or dislike them, we're talking about the article, the motion that is being presented to the body. Stand the chairman of the Finance Committee has requested presentation of a report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. As usual, I'll tell you that I'm going to be brief, and obviously, I'm lying right off the bat. It looks like we need to increase financial spending on IT.[308.02][308.02](Laughter). Thank you very much, Andy. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I always begin every presentation, whether it's the annual town meeting or this town meeting, with these, with this particular slide illustrating the Finance Committee's philosophy on budgeting in the town. We always try to reduce long-term debt without increasing operational budget by adding available funds to stabilization. You'll see later in this meeting that we're hoping to do that as well. We plan for future capital items by adding available funds to short-term capital stabilization. This helps us to prepare for future purchases, whether it's vehicles, buildings, anything like that, in order for us to put us in a good financial position and not pinch our operational budget. We also have maintained a commitment to reduce the tax rate. We, as a Finance Committee, the Financial Board, the Selectmen, have decided that the philosophy is, if we don't need to take the taxpayers' money and spend it, we're not going to do that. It's not fair to the taxpayers for us just to spend the money because we have it. And you'll see later on that commitment we follow through with. And we also hope to maintain operational budget control. That obviously is more the annual town meeting when you see that we spend all the money on the operational budgets for each of our departments. Now during this town meeting, you're going to see 36 articles come up. I have some of them highlighted here that may be questionable, whether because of the amounts or what they are. Article 2, we're seeking a town hall records management system. Currently, we have no management system for our records. If any of you have been to town hall, you see we're busting at the seams, boxes and boxes and boxes worth of files. You come in and ask for anything at any of the departments, and it's nothing that you can get right away. It has to be searched for. There's literally marker on the side of some boxes depicting what is in there. So any resident of our town or anyone coming in to ask for a record, we can't easily put our hands on it, as well as, to be honest with you, space is of a premium in this building. So what this records management system will do, it will digitize a great portion of the records that we have in town. It will do that both as, to have them on computer, it will have them for important documents, it will be put on microfiche. The question came up actually last Tuesday, why microfiche? Because of legality, the fact that digitized documents sometimes tend to be tampered with. Microfiche is the method that they use in order to make sure that the original documents are preserved. It also enables us to destroy a bunch of documents that have been digitized. There's no reason to keep old records that we now have in a computer system. The computer system also will enable us to index funds. It will label all the boxes. It's in box 213. They can just type it in, it will tell them exactly what box it's in, where it's located. And for all of our customers, who are the members of our town, we easily can get these documents for them instead of making them wait days. Article 8, Special Injury Indemnity Fund. We have a fund that we use in order to pay employees that have been injured or are sick on the job. That fund's been depleted. We haven't funded that particular fund for two years now. The amount of funds in there have been depleted to a level in which we need to replenish that fund, unfortunately, because that means that workers of our town have become ill through their profession, and we need to be able to pay them. So we're looking for $250,000 to fund that account. Articles 9 and 10, I have grouped together. Both of them are for the Downtown Revitalization Committee that we have set up. Article 9 and 10 are looking for both an architect and a grant writer. The grant writer would be in the amount of $30,000, and the architect would be in the amount of $15,000. These two particular people are going to work hand in hand, along with the Downtown Revitalization Committee, in order to help the beautification process of our downtown. They'll work, the grant writer, and the last time we had a grant writer, she was unbelievable, and she paid back her pay in gold. We're hoping that this is going to be the same situation. This $30,000 investment, we think, will easily be returned, as, you know, plus, last time we had it, millions came back because of the ability of that great grant writer. So we're hoping we're having the same success this time, and this person will more than pay their salary and help with this downtown revitalization. The other thing, the architect. The architect is going to ensure that now that we are investing money in our downtown, both with the property owners and with this money, whether it's state money or money from our town, that there's some uniformity and that rules are met within the guidelines set by the Downtown Revitalization Committee, so that the downtown basically flows, so there's not this type of oning on this building, this type of building, oning on this building, as well as to make sure that the improvements that the building owners want to get meet the standards that the town has. If they don't meet those standards, they are not eligible for these funds. Article 25, the Fino Field Pool Feasibility Study. I don't think it's any surprise to anyone here that the Fino Field Pool has been the talk of several town meetings. It is at the point where it needs major repair. When I say major repair, we're talking five to six million dollars. So it's a considerable investment. This feasibility study for $60,000 is going to investigate the best way to go forward with that project, whether it is to renovate the current pool, whether it's to build a new pool, whether it's a splash park. But we, as a Finance Committee, and everyone else feels, if you're going to spend five to six million dollars, especially when, right when you abut the Charles River, where there's going to be very, very high standards for what we do, we need to have a good plan. And we never enter anything with a five to six million dollar price tag without getting a plan. This $60,000 feasibility study will give us several options that we can look at and see, obviously, with the committees, what is the best avenue, and with you town meeting members, what's the best avenue to pursue with the Fino Field Pool. Article 29, a highway sidewalk tractor, excuse me. The current sidewalk tractor that we have is, it's falling apart. It's on its last legs. Scott's done a wonderful job trying to piece it together in order to accommodate everybody on winter storms, and we've had quite a few of them. This new sidewalk tractor is even an upgrade from our current tractor. You know our current tractor, if you've ever walked down the main street during a storm, it's just a V tractor. So basically, the snow, the, excuse me, the snow banks on the side of the sidewalks become extremely high, almost to the point where it's unsafe for people and children walking to school around those sidewalk banks. This new sidewalk tractor will have a snow blower built right into it, so it will help remove the snow as well as plow it during the storms. So it's going to be much more efficient, as well as, it's much safer for the members of our community to walk around after storms. Stormwater management. Makes me pause because it keeps me awake at night. This is a $400,000 investment that we are making in stormwater management. This is nothing that we can, that we can't do, excuse me. We've been talking about stormwater management for years. The government has mandated that we cut down the amount of phosphorus going into the Charles River. We have been on our first permit for four years, five years, and we now are, 12 years, sorry, time flies. We have now entered into phase two of the permitting process, and now we have to start executing these plans. This $400,000 is one of five installments, $1.5 million over the first five years, coming up with our plan on how we are going to deal with phosphorus being put into the Charles River and how to curtail that. After five years, we now need to start executing what we do in the first five years, the plan. This could amount to an excess of $40 million over the next 20 years. We're talking about backbreaking money, and it's nothing that we can, we can't do anything about it. The court has ruled that we need to mandate this, and the EPA and the DEP has mandated that we address our phosphorus situation. $40 million, I mean, it could devastate our budget. So right now, we're doing what we can to meet the bare minimums of the government requirements, and that, this $400,000 is the start of those, of that process. And as I said, over the next five years, we're going to spend $1.5 million, and from year 6 to '20, we're going to spend approximately $40 million more. So it's an enormous expense that this town is facing. Article 32 is for the improvements for the library stairs. I don't know if any of you have seen the library stairs. Unfortunately, they are cement. There has been a lot of patchwork to it. Unfortunately, the patchwork is not holding. So the main staircase going up to the library is becoming a pretty big safety hazard. We are trying to address this before the wintertime, when frost can get in there and make it even worse. The library trustees have come forward with a plan to repair these steps with granite steps, and we're hoping that this $30,000 will fix that issue, no, we're hoping, it will fix that problem, and remove the safety hazard that we have currently at the library. Our FinCom has come up with several recommendations. They're very similar year to year. We're hoping to put $1.5 million in free cash toward taxpayer relief. You'll see that in Article 36 today. We are hoping to put $1.35 million in our stabilization funds. You'll see that in Article 35. And we're hoping to carry $2.37 million of free cash into the spring. If any of you know free cash numbers, they, this looks very similar to what we had last year, and it has put us in the good position to be able to do the things that we've done at the annual town meeting, specifically paying off our snow and ice budget, which is a very sizable expense. Scott does a great job, but unfortunately, because of Mother Nature, that number's a big number. And in keeping the free cash balance that high, it enables us to pay that off. So it puts us in a really good position come the annual town meeting. I know the print here is very small. Basically, what this is, is the funding schedule of everything that is coming up today. There isn't much to see, because I'll tell you right now, every one of the articles that we're presenting tonight, with the exception of the tax rate, is all being done by raise and appropriate. The article for taxpayer relief for $1.5 million, we're looking to fund that for our free cash This is our revenue and expenditure report. Once again, you saw that at the annual report. Right here, it's very small, but you'll notice the number is zero at the bottom. A lot of people ask me, how do you have a $110 million budget and come up with a zero at the bottom? You guys are pretty good. It isn't that easy. Excuse me, it is that easy when I show you the bottom corner of that. And this is how we get that to zero. And these are the things that we're adjusting at the end of the year, that's why we have the special town meeting, to adjust our numbers with our stabilization deposits, as well as our levy adjustment in order to get that to zero. Right now, we're looking to have a stabilization contribution of 1.75, 1.75 million, excuse me. I just said to you it was 1.35, but we also have $400,000 in stormwater management that we have to spend as well. So that brings us to a grand total of $112,841,000 that we're going to spend. Milford's getting to be not even a small company anymore. We are, we are a major corporation. When we come into the special town meeting, we have $5.3 million in excess levy capacity. Now, one of the things people always ask me, what does excess levy capacity mean? We throw that word around in the FinCom and the financial team does in the Selectmen, but a lot of people wonder, what does excess levy capacity mean? Through the Proposition 2 and 1/2, we are allowed to tax the taxpayers a certain number, call it $20 million. We can tax up to that level. We are legally able to tell the taxpayers of Milford, hey, listen to us, you owe, and businesses, excuse me, that you owe us $20 million, and that is within our legal right to do. And we can spend that money how we choose. Here in Milford, we say, yes, we can legally spend $20 million, but we don't want to, because we don't have to. And that relieves taxpayers, both personal and businesses, from obviously paying more taxes. But that's what excess levy capacity means. We also have $3.9 million in free cash coming to this meeting. That's an unbelievably healthy number. We are the envy of every town around us when they see numbers like that. If everything goes the way we hope it goes today, we're going to spend about $3.1 million of that excess levy capacity and $1.5 million in the free cash, which is exactly what I just told you on the previous slide, almost everything's coming out of excess levy capacity. So if we leave this meeting doing everything that we hope, the end result will be that we will have $3.7 million in excess levy capacity and $2.4 million in free cash going into the annual town meeting. So if you look back at some of the objectives that we had this year, we wanted to have one, we wanted to have $3.2 million in excess levy capacity. I call it taxpayer relief, because that's taxes that we are not sending out to our residents and businesses. We've exceeded that. We're up to $3.7 million in excess levy capacity. No one around us can say that. I couldn't believe it when we did 1.8 million. I couldn't believe it when we did 2.2. We're up to $3.7 million in taxes that our taxpayers are not paying, because we're still able to provide the great services and not tax them and spend, you know, willy-nilly. Capital projects, we've always hoped to put $1.5 million toward our capital. It's important to us to invest in fire trucks, highway vehicles, improvements at the senior center, the library, that type of stuff. We've always committed that $1.5 million, and we've done it again this year. And last, we've always wanted to put $500,000 into our stabilization account. Stabilization account is basically your savings account. That's the rainy day fund. If we ever have anything, whether it was a school, a building, you know, a roof blew off a building, stabilization is where we go to. Having a large stabilization account always, also helps us when we go to borrow money. The larger the stabilization account, the better rate you get when you borrow money. So it's a, it's a dual benefit. Not only are we saving money, but when we go to borrow money, we're actually getting a better rate, and we're saving money on the interest payments. Lastly, I've ended every report I've had under my leadership of the Finance Committee with this, and I'm proud to put this one up. Stay the course. We need to continue our financial responsibility, both by department heads, the finance team, the Selectmen. My Finance Committee, I know, is committed to that, and I'm thrilled at the work that they do. And you, as town meeting members, you need to continue to do the good job that you do.
Article 1. Mr. Pillar.
I move that the town vote pursuant to general laws, Chapter 60, Section 62A, to adopt the new Article 40 of the general bylaws as follows. The town treasurer is authorized to enter into payment agreements between the treasurer and persons entitled to redeem parcels and tax title. Such agreements shall be for maximum of no more than three years and may not waive any interest that has accrued in the amount of the tax title account.
Well, it's such a short one, I think you can finish it up, Charles.
Any such agreement must require a minimum payment at the inception of the agreement of 25% of the amount needed to redeem the parcel. During the term of the agreement, the treasurer may not bring any action to foreclose the tax title unless payments are not made in accordance with the schedule set out in the agreement, or timely payments are not made on other amounts due to the town that are in lien on the same parcel.
Motion has been made in second of the town vote pursuant to general laws, Chapter 60, Section 62A, to adopt a new Article 40 of the general bylaws as follows, as read by our town treasurer. It is a Finance Committee of recommendation, favorable recommendation. Chris?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This article is being presented in order to improve our outstanding tax title collection process. Payment plans are both beneficial to the town and the taxpayer. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to implement a records management program at town hall to include destruction of records upon proper approval from the Commonwealth, to create a customized retention schedule and a locator system, and to include the microfilming or scanning of records to free, free up available physical storage space.
A motion has been made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to implement a record, records management program at town hall to include destruction of records upon proper approval from the Commonwealth, to create a customized retention schedule and a locator system, and to include the microfilming or scanning of records to free up available physical storage space. Finance Committee recommendation, favorable. Selectmen Kincaid.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article seeks the sum of $60,000. The town does not have a formal records retention program in place now. We do not have a records destruction program nor a microfilm policy. We are out of space to store our public records. The Selectmen authorized a comprehensive records review at the town hall, which included an analysis of our files and space. We now have completed that review of our town records and received specific recommendations and suggestions with a cost estimate to establish and maintain a comprehensive record retention program. The next step for the town is to implement a record retention system, which will include a complete inventory of all the records to be indexed and computerized. We will also determine with state authorization which records can be legally destroyed. Finally, we will determine which records can be placed on microfilm and then destroyed. Once the system is in place, all town records will be stored on-site. Retrieval of any record will be accomplished in a quick and efficient manner. In addition, we will review and update records each year to both microfilm and destroy records as permitted by law. The estimated cost for the program is $60,000. This includes equipment like shelving, supplies like boxes and labels, a database, and the labor. I ask for your support of this article. Thank you.
Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 4. Three, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to add a new standing vote of the Milford Town Meeting by inserting in the next available numerical order a standing vote as follows. The proceedings of the town, excuse me, the proceedings of town meetings shall be conducted in accordance with the most recent edition of town meeting time by Johnson, Trustman, and Wadsworth, except as modified by Massachusetts general laws and the legislative acts, the general bylaws, and standing votes of the town meeting of Milford.
Motion made in second to add a new standing vote of the Milford Town Meeting by inserting in the next available numerical order a standing vote as follows. The proceedings of town meetings shall be conducted in accordance with the most recent edition of town meeting time by Johnson, Trustman, and Wadsworth, except as modified by Massachusetts general laws and the legislative acts, the general bylaws, and standing votes of the town meeting of, town meeting of Milford. Finance Committee recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Sponsor. Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michelangelo Bon Temple, clerk for the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee. The committee is here before town meeting tonight to fulfill its obligation to strengthen and thereby preserve the representative town meeting as a legislative branch of the town government by making such recommendations to this body as to the ways and means of improving town meeting procedures. One of the duties of the committee is to develop and maintain a comprehensive town meeting handbook. Subcommittee Number 4, of which I am the chair, was assigned that task. The Subcommittee began by reviewing the handbooks of 17 towns provided by our predecessor, the Town Meeting Working Group. All the handbooks devoted a section to the rules and procedures which govern the proceedings of their town meetings. The rules and procedures in the evaluated handbooks are all based on the general laws applicable to town meeting, that town's specific bylaws on town meeting, and its own specific customs and traditions. The Subcommittee also found that a town's bylaws on town meeting usually cite a specific manual of parliamentary law, which is typically modified by some of its local customs and traditions that have in turn been codified. So the Subcommittee determined that a prerequisite for producing a handbook should be the adoption of a specific manual of parliamentary law and the codification of our customary practices and traditions in the standing votes of the town meeting, town meeting rules. Article 1, and the motion just present, excuse me, just stated, concerned the adoption of a specific manual of parliamentary law. Articles 5, 6, and 7 will address the codification of some of this body's customary practices and traditions that, as modifications, will take precedence over town meeting time. First question is, is why do we need a manual of parliamentary law? And as the authors state in town meeting time, of most importance is not which manual is selected as a basis, but that there be a basis known to and available to the public, and that the rules of order be applied fully and partially and consistently. and that the rules of order be applied fully and partially and consistently. The later part of that statement is true, very much so for this Town Meeting. The former part of that statement is not true. So that's what we're here to address tonight. And there are two reasons why the committee chose Town Meeting Time as the basis. The first is that Town Meeting Time was written precisely with Massachusetts Town Meeting in mind. This manual works, as the authors further state, within the framework for a Town Meeting as set forth in the general laws of the Commonwealth. No other manual of parliamentary law can make that claim. The second is that Town Meeting Time is the primary manual that our moderator uses in moderating our Town Meeting. Again, as I stated previously, of utmost importance is not which manual is selected as a basis, but that there be a basis known to and available to the public. The recommendation of this committee is that the basis of our Town Meeting handbook should be Town Meeting Time. The committee asks you to vote favorably on this motion. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Moody. It's a longer walk to the podium, Mr. Moody.
Jerry Moody, Precinct Six. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I'm sure that the sponsors of this article are very well-intended, and I'm sure they're working very diligently on what they're doing. But what is sought to be adopted as a set of rules is simply not a set of rules. This is the book called Town Meeting Time. It was last put together in 1962. And what it is, it's a compendium of the laws and the practices, not just in Massachusetts, but in all the six New England states. They're all in there. Massachusetts is certainly well-represented in there. There's also a review of other cities and other towns, I should say, not cities, other towns in terms of their bylaws and what they provide. But one thing it is not, it is not a set of rules, and really should not be adopted as if it were a set of rules. I'm not even sure what it would mean if this vote took place. But what I think would happen is that a lot of people within, pull out their Robert Rules of Orders, you know, Mr. Moderator, point of order on page 76, it says this, then the moderator's going to have to pull his out, Town Council will have to pull his out. I think a lot of time would be taken up very, very unnecessarily if this were done. If this body wants to adopt a defined set of rules, then that's what it should do. Adopt a defined, Robert's Rules of Orders or a couple of the others that are available. And then it's a clear and a defined set of rules, and everybody knows what it is. This is a very good volume. This is the volume I bought when I first came here in 1979. It's a great reference for Town Councils. It's a great reference for Town Moderators. Every Town Moderator has one. But it's not a set of rules that could guide this body, because it suggests best practices based on what goes on in other cities or towns, or other towns. It suggests what happens in other states. So it's really not a set of rules, and adopting it runs the risk of what could happen is just what I said, a lot of unnecessary debate on what's said on page 22 in relation to this kind of dilatory motion, and it's just not necessary. You don't want this body to end up being, like in some towns where they go night after night debating all of these different motions that are unnecessary. This has always been a very efficient body, should continue to be a very efficient body. And again, if you want to adopt a set of rules, I don't recommend it, but then go with something like Robert's Rules of Orders or one of the other defined sets of rules, but not adoption of a compendium of laws, reviewing laws and practices across the New England states. So I'd recommend you defeat this article.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Nero.
If someone could clear this up for me, it appears we're being asked to adopt a set of rules, laws, regulations, which we know absolutely nothing about. We have no idea what's in that book. Wouldn't it make sense, common sense, that when professionals come before a body that's going to approve something, that we may at least be presented with a copy and plenty of time to review, so that we can intelligently debate the issue and discuss it? I think the bottom line is, why would anybody get up and say, "Adopt a set of rules and not present them to us"? Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Bon Temple.
A number of things to answer. First of all, most recent edition of Town Meeting Time is 2001. So it's been up, it's actually 62, 1984, and 2001. As to using a standard set of parliamentary laws as found in Robert's Rules, or, excuse me, or Cushing's Manual, or Demeter's Manual, or Reed's Rules, or the Principla of Procedure in Deliberative Bodies by George Glover Crocker, I'll cite two court cases. One being Wood v. Milton back in 1908, that said, "The technical rules of parliamentary law designed for the regulation of deliberative assemblies are in some respects ill-adapted for the transaction of the affairs of a Town Meeting." Hence, although in the general action of Town Meeting conforms to parliamentary procedure, it has never been held that they are governed by the strict rules of legislative practice. And secondly, there's also another case, Bloom vs. Arlington, where they say, "Coming directly to Section 68 of Robert's Rules of Order Revised, we are once struck by its dubious application to Town Meeting Government. The phrase 'regular business meeting' would be inept, description of a Town Meeting, whether annual or special. The phrase 'previous regular business meeting' would be even more inept. The two phrases in the same sentence must refer to the same type of meeting. Even by force construction, the phrase 'previous regular business meeting' would run counter to statute and to settled law." So adopting a standard manual parliamentary law would be ill-advised. The authors of Town Meaning Time go to great lengths to explain that. And as to Town Meaning Time just being a compendium of best practices, that's not necessarily true, because when they describe subsidiary motions, privileged motions, incidental motions, they give in their basic points, which is a description of what you can and cannot do with the motion, they give pretty firm set standards on what to do. As to the availability of this book, it's at the local library, you can very easily get it. The job of this committee is going to be to take those rules that would be applied to this body, that would currently be used by this body, and only use those rules. Anything that does not match up, we would give, again, deference and preference to the way this meeting is conducted. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Yes? Mr. Wheelock.
This sounds like a great time to let the status quo continue to operate. I'd like to say that the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee is the Frankenstein's monster of citizens from Milford who are consolidating too much power in this town to the detriment of this town. And none of the, as far as I know, nobody's ever taken a litigious attitude about how we've conducted Town Meeting previously, and I don't think we're vulnerable to changing how we've been to Town Meeting for 100 and something years. I would like the board, the group here, to reject this Article Four for the reasons I've stated.
Any other voter care to be heard in the motion? Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, we are charged with developing a handbook, and the basic principle here is that we need some basis to base the rules of the handbook. And as the presenter of the article has told you, Town Meeting Time seems to be a good framework. It's a pretty thick volume, pretty heavy to everybody to read and understand. But the final result will be using that as a framework to develop the detailed chapters of the handbook, which you will eventually see, review, and approve. So the Town Meeting Times is the basic from which the Town Moderator has run this Town Meeting. There are a few exceptions, of which we've taken on our own to adopt, and the handbook will take into consideration all those elements. So this is to get us started when we develop the handbook. If you feel it is inconsistent with the way we've been doing business over the years, you'll have plenty of time to comment on it. We'll keep revising it till we get a majority agreement. The handbook will survive the Town Meeting's approval. So that's where we're coming from. I hope you would support this article and let us continue to do our work and develop a handbook.
Any other voter care to be heard? Motion has been made in second that we move the previous questions. This is an attempt to shut off debate and requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the previous question manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor of moving the previous question rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. All those opposed to moving the previous question rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one, 12 in favor, three opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two, 16 in favor, none opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three, 13 in favor, 10 opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four, 16 in favor, one opposed. Precinct five. I'm sorry, how many in favor? 17? And one opposed? Six opposed, I'm sorry. Precinct six. Precinct six, 21 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven. 18 in favor, two opposed. And precinct seven, precinct eight. Precinct eight, 17 in favor, two opposed. At large? At large, 14 in favor, two opposed. 144, having voted in the affirmative, 26 in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired, and the question is now before us. The motion is that the proceedings of, that all new standing votes of the Milford Town Meeting by inserting in the next available numerical order a standing vote as follows. The proceedings of Town Meeting shall be conducted in accordance with the most recent edition of Town Meeting Time by Johnson, Trussman, and Wadsworth, except as modified by Massachusetts General Laws and the Legislative Acts, the general bylaws, and standing votes of the Town Meeting of Milford. All those in favor will rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one, five in favor, 11 opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two, five in favor, nine opposed. Precinct three. Precinct seven, precinct three, seven in favor, 15 opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four, eight in favor, nine opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five, one in favor, 23 opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six, two in favor, 18 opposed. Precinct seven. Precinct seven, six in favor, 11 opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight, two in favor, 17 opposed. At large? At large, three in favor, nine opposed. 39 have voting in favor, 122 opposed. The motion is defeated. Article four. Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to add a new standing vote of the Milford Town Meeting by inserting in the next available numerical order a standing vote as follows. Immediately after the call to order of any annual or special Town Meeting, except for a special Town Meeting immediately preceding or within an annual Town Meeting, the Town Meeting Members who so desire shall be given the opportunity to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States. After beginning of the opening session of any annual or October special Town Meeting, but prior to consideration of any warrant articles, the moderator, at his discretion, may invite a Milford choir group to sing the National Anthem or other patriotic song. There should be no obligation or requirement imposed upon any individual Town Meeting member or other person present to participate in any way if he or she does not desire to do so.
There's a Finance Committee of recommendation.
Refer to sponsor.
Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, hopefully this will be an easier one, but we never know. This was a response to the Town Meeting survey, which was taken a couple of years ago, and the response of the survey was that of 192 respondents, 77% favored this article. So with that said, I hope you'll vote favorably.
Any other voter care to be heard? I intended to say the Pledge of Allegiance, but I forgot. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article five. Motion is made in second that we pass over Article five. A motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. It's debatable. Any voter care to be heard in the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article six. Motion made in second to pass over Article six. All those, any voter care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article six. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion to pass over is carried. Article seven. Motion is made in second we pass over Article seven. Does any voter care to be heard in the motion to pass over Article seven? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article seven. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion to pass over is carried. Article eight. Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the Town Vote raise appropriate the sum of $250,000 to be used for the payment for medical bills and other expenses incurred resulting from injuries to police officers or firefighters, to be dispositioned to the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Funds, to be utilized for purposes of paying expenses incurred under General Law, Section 41, I'm sorry, Chapter 41, Section 100, and/or 111F.
Motion's been made and seconded the Town Vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $250,000 to be used for payment for medical bills and other expenses incurred resulting from injuries to police officers or firefighters, to be deposited to the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Funds, to be utilized for purposes of paying expenses incurred under General Law's Chapter 41, Section 100, and/or 111F. Does the Finance Committee have recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Under the Governor's Modernization Act, the Town created a special leave indemnity fund for police and fire personnel injured on duty. This article seeks a sum of $250,000 to supplement this fund to pay medical bills and other expenses to those police officers and firefighters injured while on duty to our community. The fund was last supplemented over two years ago. It's extremely difficult to budget this account, and therefore needs to be supplemented periodically to ensure that the Town has sufficient funds to pay these costs. Should the Town receive a recovery from a third party found to be responsible for any injury, then the third-party recoveries can be placed back into this account if for medical purposes. Salary recoveries would be placed in the general fund. I would urge your support for this article. Thank you.
Any vote to care to be heard on the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nine. Selectman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the Town Vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to obtain the services of a grant writer/consultant, to provide grant-writing services to the Town, including but not limited to the downtown vacay program, to provide support and assistance for the community and economic development efforts of the Town in implementing the economic development strategies, the community development strategies, and the comprehensive plan, including the administration of grant programs and ensuring grant requirement compliance.
Motion made and seconded the Town Vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to obtain the services of a grant writer/consultant, to provide grant-writing services to the Town, including but not limited to the Milford Downtown Facade Program, to provide support and assistance for community and economic development efforts of the Town in implementing the economic development strategy, the community development strategy, and the comprehensive plan, including the administration of grant programs and ensuring grant requirement compliance. Does the Finance Committee have recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any vote to care to be heard? Selectman Walsh.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. This article seeks the sum of $30,000 to hire a grant writer/consultant to provide services to the Town to assist in seeking grant opportunities, to make improvements to our downtown district. The Board of Selectmen appointed a downtown revitalization committee, whose mission is to initiate and lead improvements to the downtown district by identifying improvement opportunities and developing methods to implement these improvements by working with private and public resources to implement positive changes. These improvements will include, but not be limited to, vacay upgrades, landscape projects, parking lot upgrades, and improvements to park areas. A grant writer will help in seeking grants to implement both the short-term and long-term plans to revitalize our town-town. I urge your support of this article.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Visconti. If I don't recognize you by name, and I apologize if I don't remember, just identify yourself by name and where you live, so we can validate that you're a registered voter in the town of Milford.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. At the pre-Town Meeting Forum held last week, we were told that this grant writer would not be an employee of the Town, rather would be an independent contractor, would not have any, be paid any benefits, including insurance or any other types of perks. It's a one-time hire, if you will, contractor, to write, to search for grants. I'm wondering if somebody, if some official can now confirm that in front of this group, so we know, in fact, that that is true. Thank you.
Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Valani.
Town Meeting Members, yes. In response to the previous speaker's question, this person will not be an employee of the Town, will not be receiving any type of health or other type benefits. So he, in essence, or she, will be an independent contractor, again, not a Town Employee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Wheelock. Stand up and yell to me, Mr. Wheelock. I know you give me a cheer for the Red Sox, I run.
Jamie Wheelock, Precinct Five. And I'm not sure what it means to not be an employee of the Town when you're getting paid $30,000 by the Town to do your job, but maybe there's a perfectly sound reason why I'm not understanding how that doesn't make you an employee. I'd like to speak in opposition to Article Nine here. Spending any of Milford's taxpayer dollars on behalf of the downtown property owners is a terrible idea for the vast majority of us, and also unfair to landlords outside of the downtown district. The downtown revitalization committee should consider itself lucky to have access to the $150,000 state dollars that they've received and figure out how to accomplish their goals with that money. It should be a simple matter for the downtown revitalization committee to form its own owners' and merchants' association to manage this work and arrange any lines of credit related to accomplishing their goals. I hope this group will shoot down this proposal and allow downtown property owners to figure out how to do their own storefront facades, which they've been neglecting to do for decades. Individual ones, yes, have been stepping up to take care of their facades, and they're either hiring their own architects to do it, or they're hiring contractors, or door and storefront facade improvers who just know how to take an existing facade and upgrade it to modern standards without hiring additional lawyers, grant writers, and additional architects. Certainly, they haven't been getting paid from Town taxpayer dollars for the benefit of downtown property owners. Please vote no against Article Nine.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr., I'm sorry, Kate Mastriani.
Kate Mastriani, Precinct Three. If you take a look at the text for Article Nine, it states that the grant writer servicing or grant writing services to the Town, including but not limited to the Milford Downtown Facade Program. And on the forum discussion, they clearly stated that businesses and other departments within the Town would be able to use the resources of the grant writer. Just to confirm that.
Any vote to care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Correa.
Al Correa, Precinct Five. Words of easy understanding. An employee is an employee. A contractor is a contractor. When we employ somebody to do a project, they get their 30 grand, they do their work, they go away. Very simple. We don't pay FICA, we don't pay all their benefits, and they don't get severance packages. So I hope that makes it simple to understand. The other thing that, again, to an old man here that seems easy, the last time we did this, or the last two or three times, Sue Clark got paid, whatever it was, 20, 30 grand. She didn't bring back 20 or 30. She brought back 700,000 in one piece. She brought back 800,000 or 900,000 in another. Again, I'm not the greatest with math, but when somebody goes three-for-three and they're bringing back hundreds of thousands of dollars, seems like a good deal. Now, the other thing about us subsidizing the merchants downtown, we charge them 1.5 times what we charge homeowners, to give them back a little bit to help. And by the way, I think I get benefit if I see a nice downtown. I think my property value, and I can't put a number on it, but when people are looking to buy in Milford, if they see a nice downtown, I think it'll help my property value. The other thing is, I don't want to see orange and purple and green and polka dot and plaid buildings. I'd much rather have something that says, hey, by the way, if you follow a nice set of rules and make our downtown look uniform and nice, you get 75 percent of your awnings paid for, because that'll be the grant we get. Hmm, seems like an easy one to me. But again, I know I'm simple, but I would say, this seems like a good deal. And so far, it's been three-for-three, but what is it they say? Previous or past earnings are not indicative of future potential. But I'll go for three-for-three anytime.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Yes, voter in Precinct, well, you've already been recognized, someone who hasn't spoken. All right, Mr. Wheelock again. Now, you're only limited to three minutes, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Correa, for clarifying the distinction between an employee versus a contractor. Anyhow, we're definitely paying him to work. I'm sorry I didn't comprehend the subtle distinction between contractor and employee. Let's not confuse the great work Sue Clark did getting state money for sidewalk projects and town-wide benefit projects, not individual landlord projects, okay? Financing is incredibly cheap right now. The ability for these people to get a line of credit against their property, or to use a credit card to do whatever facade improvement they want to do, is so easy. That's what most of the rest of us do if we're going to do an improvement. Also, I got to say, the guidelines that create continuity actually can be very homogenizing and tedious. There are certain boards in this Town, social media boards, that have nostalgic pictures of the old days. There was no guidelines back then, and people loved those nostalgic pictures where different merchants did different things, just based on the fact that they knew how to run a business and bought what was available for them to buy. And we look at those pictures in the past, and they're dynamite. I've been to places where they've had downtown revitalizations, and to some degree, it's much too homogenized. I'm not saying that has to happen here, but these guys can manage their own improvements on their own.
Yes, Mr. Akuti. Motion's been made to move the previous question, which is an attempt to shut off debate, requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote if that is not unanimous. The individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of moving the previous question manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor of moving the previous question rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. All those opposed to moving the previous question rise and remain standing until countered by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports 15 in favor, one opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two reports 17 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct three. 21 in favor and four opposed, all right. Precinct four. Precinct four, 17 in favor, none opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five, 22 in favor, two opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six, 21 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven. Precinct seven, 18 in favor, two opposed. Precinct eight. 18 in favor, one opposed. At large. Precinct, at large, 14 in favor, zero opposed. 163, having voted in the affirmative, 10 in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired. The question now comes upon the motion that the Town Vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to obtain the services of a grant writer/consultant, to provide grant writing services to the Town, including but not limited to the Milford Downtown Facade Program, to provide support and assistance for community and economic development efforts of the Town in implementing the economic development strategy, the community development strategy, and the comprehensive plan, including the administration of grant programs, and ensuring grant requirement compliance. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion is carried. Article 10. Selectman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. I move that the Town Vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to utilize to obtain the services of an architect, to provide general design services and assistance to the Town, including but not limited to the implementation of the Milford Downtown Vacay Program.
Motion made and seconded the Town Vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be utilized to obtain the services of an architect, to provide general design services and assistance to the Town, including but not limited to the implementation of the Milford Downtown Facade Program. Does the Finance Committee have recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Selectman Walsh.
Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Moderator, this article seeks to sum the amount of $15,000 to hire an architect to provide services to the Town, to help implement our downtown revitalization program. This program will provide partial funding to downtown property owners to make improvements to their property within guidelines established by the Town. The Town has received an earmark from the State and the sum of $150,000 to be used to assist property owners in making improvements to their properties. Each owner will be required to expend 25 percent of their own funds to participate in this program. An architect will be essential to the success of this program in providing design, guidance for property owners for such items as lighting, color selection, signings, awnings, designs, doors, and window selection, as well as provide initial schematic sketches for vacays. I urge your support for this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Any other vote to be heard?
Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Nero.
Again, it's unclear to me whether we're talking about an architect to guide these property owners to spend the state money, or whether you will come back to this group seeking additional funds. Could somebody answer that before I speak?
Any vote to be heard? Please be seated, Mr. Nero. Mr. Nero, please be seated.
I'm sorry.
Please be seated. Mr. Walsh.
Ladies and gentlemen, you can never successfully implement any project without guidance. And that's exactly what we're looking for the architect to do. You heard a previous speaker talk about, we're looking to implement improvements to the downtown area of Milford. And one of those improvements that we're looking to do is to have a plan, so that we don't have one building that has a green awning, we don't have another building that has a different set of windows, we don't have another building that has a different set of doors. We want to hire a professional that's going to work with the grant writer, that's going to bring a plan forward to this community, that's going to say, we believe, or I believe, that this is what we think is in the best interest of this community. It's very important for everybody to understand, myself included, that this person is going to work with all of us, not only you, the taxpayers, but this person is going to work with the Board of Selectmen, he's going to work with the zoning board, the planning board, and all the boards in this community, to make sure that the money that we're investing, the $15,000 and the $30,000 in these two articles, is going to be spent properly and for the reasons that we appropriate these funds, is to make sure that the downtown revitalization of our community is done properly and with a plan. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Visconti first.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, Precinct 8. Once again, at the pre-town meeting forum, we were told verbally that 75% of the money given to the downtown property owners would have to be paid back to the town. Now, to that end, I move to amend the previous article in the following way. Once again, I move to amend the previous article in the following way. To insert the following, participating property owners will be required to pay back the 75% portion of the grant within three years. Failure to do so will constitute a lien on the property. I urge you to vote favorably on this amendment. It was told to us verbally, but as the saying goes, if it ain't in writing, it ain't. This will put it in writing. Thank you.
The amendment has been proposed by Mr. Visconti, which would insert the following, participating property owners will be required to pay back the 75% portion of grant within a three-year period. Failure to do so will constitute a lien on the property. I'm going to rule that amendment out of order because I don't see any connection between paying that back and spending $15,000 to utilize the services of an architect. So we'll continue with discussion on the motion to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be utilized to obtain the services of an architect. Mr. Nero.
My question required a yes or no. I want to applaud the selectmen's outreach to our local businessmen, their friends and contributors, with our tax dollars with this article, for their commitment to supporting those that support them. Another display of their pro-business vision with this expenditure. Like the water company purchase, offering $20 million to four local businessmen above what the experts recommended, or buying three dilapidated pieces of real estate on Central Street for $700,000 from local businessmen, totally valueless property. To build a parking lot adjacent to those buildings where there's 100 empty spaces, an unused parking lot, or selling the middle school east valued at $4 million to a local businessman for $115,000. This article before us is all part of their vision to support local business, their friends with our dollars. And don't forget their rapid turnaround on the part issue. No part in our town. We have to protect our children. Local businessmen came to them. We're going to lose six jobs. We can't produce marijuana in Milford. We'll reverse our vote, they said. Allow them to poison our children as long as there's money in it for us and them. Yes, this article's yet another handout to their friends and supporters with our taxpayer dollars. This will bring us back a beautiful and prosperous Main Street. And after the architect's recommendations, the question I asked, would they come back to us for money to support this recommendation? We'll be asked for half a million dollars or more to improve personal, private property of individuals on Main Street. Yes, dozen Hispanic churches on Main Street will vanish. The 10 tattoo parlors will miraculously evaporate. The tarot card readers and mystic fortune tellers will go back to one socket. Yes, they're truly pro-business, but certainly not pro-taxpayer. And either you get it or you don't, but don't let them take your money.
Any other vote to be heard?
Moderator.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to know, from the, maybe the Downtown Revitalization Committee can answer this question for me, why the sign and facade program is where we're starting here. I'd like to know what opportunities for public feedback there were for this, to see what the taxpayers of this town think the top priorities should be. I'd like to know what the economic development and community development strategies that were mentioned in the last article are. They don't actually exist yet. I just want to make sure that we're not rushing into something like we did with the Central Street properties last fall. I want to make sure that there is a strategy in place and that we are going to do something that is going to, no question, benefit the entire town. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes. Mr. Korea.
Al Korea, still Precinct 5. I'm sorry to take up another minute or two, but this is getting silly. I mean, let's not let facts get in the way of informed opinions. First of all, the 75% is the same we do on TIPS. If we give you a TIF, if we give you a dollar to help your business, and you leave Milford before three years and sell your business, you got to pay it back. That's what that's about. It's not that it was ever intended as a loan. It was to make sure that somebody who's about to sell their business doesn't take our money and leave, okay? It's just that simple. Number two, you could come back and ask for half a million, 5 million, 500 million. And do I believe that the town meeting would sit there and say, oh, yeah, that makes sense. We'll just give them more money? God help us. The reason Milford is in such good shape is you all. I trust you all that if something came up and this committee came back and asked for a little bit of money, first of all, you got to give it to them. And you've had enough common sense over the years to make Milford as strong as it is. I don't think you'd be gullible. Let's just deal with this.
Any other vote to be heard? Motion made to move the previous question, again, an attempt to shut off debate. Requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. By taking that voice vote, I'm not discouraging people from voting against it, just that I'm getting a sense that we've had a lot of discussion on it and speed up the meeting. But feel free, if you want to vote against moving the previous question, please feel free to do so. All those in favor of moving the previous question manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor of moving the previous question rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed to moving the previous question rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct 1.
Precinct 1, 15 in favor, none opposed.
Precinct 1, 15 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 2.
17 in favor, none opposed.
Precinct 2, 17 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 3.
21 in favor, 4 opposed.
Precinct 3, 21 in favor, 4 opposed. Precinct 4.
17 in favor, none opposed.
Precinct 4, 17 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 5.
17 in favor, none opposed.
Precinct 5, 22 in favor, 2 opposed. Precinct 6.
21 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 6, 21 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 7.
21 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 7, 21 in favor, none opposed. Precinct 8.
18 in favor, 1 opposed.
Precinct 18, in favor, none or 1? 1 opposed. At large.
14 in favor, 0 opposed.
At large, 14 in favor, 0 opposed. 166, having voted in the affirmative, 7 in the negative, moving the previous question has been carried by the necessary two-thirds. The question now comes upon the motion, which is that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be utilized to obtain the services of an architect to provide general design services and assistance to the town, including but not limited to the implementation of the Milford Downtown Facade Program. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion's been carried. Article 11. Turn your body.
I have a, an amendment to what was published in the warrant. Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting, I move that the town vote to amend Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws, the Use Regulation Schedule relating to self-service gasoline stations as follows. On the use table, Section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule, to allow, with a condition, in commercial B, commercial C, and industrial A, B, and C zoning districts, self-service gasoline stations. The self-service gasoline stations shall be allowed, subject to a special condition 32, which is that they shall maintain at least one active attendant service pump island at all times.
A motion's been made and seconded the town vote to amend Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw Use Regulation Schedule relating to self-service gasoline stations as follows. Under Section 2.3, the Use Regulation Schedule, the commercial uses of a gasoline station slash self-service with a 1.32 are allowed in the RA, RB, I'm sorry, not allowed in the RA, RB, RC, RD, ORBP, or CA. They are allowed in the CB, CC, IA, IB, and IC with the A, and then there's a footnote or it's a 32, which is different from what was in the warrant that was published, and that 32 says that self-service gasoline stations shall maintain at least one active attendant service pump island at all times. Finance Committee?
Refer to the planning board.
Refer to Sponser. Does the planning board have a report?
Moderator. The planning board has a report on the amendment as presented, because that was a complaint. We have to, we have a report on the original, the original document.
Okay, why don't you make that presentation?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on September 18, 2018, regarding the subject of Article 11, at which time the Planning Board voted 4 in favor, 1 opposed, to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article 11 is an application by Volta Oil Company to amend the zoning bylaw to allow for self-service gas stations by Zoning Board of Appeals Special Permit within CB, CC, IA, IB, and IC zoning districts. Planning Board recommends Article 11 be adopted as printed in the warrant, and as I indicated, that that does not include what the amendment was. The Planning Board did not meet on the amendment as presented.
Okay. As far as the amendment is concerned, again, I point out that what they're adding in the CB, CC, IA, IB, and IC district is a 32, which would be adding that self-service gasoline stations shall maintain at least one active attendant service pump island at all times. I think, I think that's within the scope of the article, so I'm going to allow that. It doesn't seem to be out of the scope of, in fact, it tightens that up, I would think. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion as presented? Yes.
Cassie Porter from Precinct 4, and I just have a question about the change, because I believe at Tuesday's meeting, we asked about that full-service lane, and we were told that an attendant would service someone there if they were elderly or if they were handicapped, and that was an exclusion. So if Jane Doe or Jodo drove up and wanted full service, they would receive that only if they were elderly or handicapped, and I'd just like to qualify and answer on that. Thank you.
Well, again, what they're adding is a condition that says, self-service gasoline stations shall maintain at least one active attendant service pump island at all times. So they've added that condition to the self-service gasoline station. Any other vote to be heard?
Moderator.
Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti from Precinct 8. Fortunately, I did not have to do very much research on this article, reason being that both the state of New Jersey and the state of Oregon did all the research for me, and both of those states concluded that there was no perceptible benefit to the consumer to have self-serve gas stations. So what those two states did is, rather than leave it up to the individual municipalities to decide whether they wanted self-service or not, the state ruled that they would ban self-service stations in both of those states. To this day, New Jersey still has a ban on self-serve gas stations. Now, someone may tell you that, well, Oregon has lessened their restrictions somewhat, and that is true. What Oregon did was, because they have many long- What Oregon did was, because they have many long deserted rural roads with a gas station maybe every hundred miles or so, they amended their ban in the following way. They said that, okay, after six PM at night through, I believe, six AM in the morning, it might be five AM, we will allow gas stations on long rural roads, no closer than, I believe it was seventy-five miles apart, to change to self-service during those hours. Other than that, in Oregon and in every other station must be full-serve. Now, they did all the research. Keep in mind, the original pitch, when self-serve gas stations first came into favor, was that the consumer will save significant money because the gas prices at self-serve will be lower by a substantial amount than at full-serve. That is no longer the case. A recent survey by AAA concluded that there is little, if any, savings to the consumer for self-serve gas station versus full-serve. That was confirmed at the pre-town meeting forum last week by the sponsor of this article. The article speaks to at least one full-serve island to service those people who might be somewhat hesitant to use the self-serve, or might be physically challenged, someone like myself. But they've taken care of that. All a physically challenged person or elderly person would have to do is pull up to the pump, take out their cellphone, call the phone number that's posted on the pump, and as soon as the attendant gets done texting his girlfriend or her boyfriend inside the convenience store, they may come out and help you pump your gas. Don't have a cellphone? No problem. You open your door, roll out of the car, hopefully not into a puddle of spilled gas or slip on the ice and snow. As you're rolling around on the ground, all you need to do is reach up maybe five, five-and-a-half feet if you can, in searching for the help button on the pump, and press that help button. Now, there is no help button to help you find the help button. And once again, hopefully, by this time now, the attendant is all done texting his girlfriend, and the plans are all made for a late-night rendezvous, or maybe not. Maybe he has to wait for his girlfriend to text back and can't be bothered pumping your gas. In any case, self, no one talked about safety. And someone will tell you that, oh, well, you know, they're safer now than they ever were. We have all kinds of sophisticated suppression systems. Well, not that long ago, probably a year and a half ago, in a nearby town, that sophisticated suppression system inadvertently was triggered, not by fire, just by a faulty system, causing in excess of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars damage.
Mr. Visconti, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. I understand we've gone thirty seconds over your five minutes, so try to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Fifteen seconds.
I think you got the idea.
Yes, first the town meeting member in precinct three. Again, limitation is five minutes, so.
Bob Kelly in precinct three. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to find out through you, is if the fire department was the one that initially?
Speak into the microphone, please. Speak into the microphone.
I would like to find out if the fire department, when this article was originally put out, it was put out by our fire chief at the time, Jack DePaulo. It was done for a safety reason. I don't care about the money. Money will regulate itself. The question is, are we safe now by having self-service? And the fire department should have the ultimate authority in that. So is there anyone here that can speak for the fire department or has been passed by it?
Any voter care to be heard? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I'm Mark Nelson, precinct seven, also the deputy fire chief. The fire chief is in favor of the self-serve gasoline stations, for reasons of the fire suppression system. That's something right now that the full-serve stations in town do not have. So in the event of a fire, it would free burn until the fuel was gone and until the fire department arrived. So for those reasons, this automatic fire suppression system, if there was enough heat caused by the fire, would discharge. Yes, there have been accidental discharges, you see them sometimes, but they're infrequent. And we feel that, for life-safety reasons, these suppression systems would be second to none. So for that reason, we're in favor of it.
Any other voter care to be heard? I believe Mr. Antonellis has been trying to get my attention. Mr. Antonellis wishes to be recognized. He's not a registered voter in the town of Milford. He's the legal representative, the proponent of the article. Not being a registered voter requires the unanimous consent of the body. Does anyone object to hearing from Mr. Antonellis? Hearing no objection. Attorney Antonellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joseph Antonellis, I'm an attorney. My office is 288 Main Street, Milford. I represent the proponent of this article, Volter Oil. Just by way of explanation, Volter is in the process of building the new gas station that is going in on Cedar Street near the 495 interchange. When we first presented this article to the Board of Selectmen to ask that it be placed on the warrant, I was rightfully directed by the Board of Selectmen to the fire department and to the Milford Commission on Disabilities. And we had a meeting with the chief. Deputy Chief Nelson has already explained to you the position of the fire department, the fire suppression systems that are required for self-service. In other words, in order for any station to operate as a self-service station, they must have specific equipment approved by the fire marshal, approved by the Milford Fire Department. So all of the safety concerns are regulated by the fire marshal's office. They're qualified, they're specific, and there are very few stations in Milford that have those systems. After we got the blessing of the fire chief, we had a meeting with the Commission on Disabilities. Prior to meeting with the Commission on Disabilities, my client and I made a few trips to self-service stations in the area, and I can tell you that a lot of what Michael Visconti told you tonight is the truth. In our survey of some of the self-service stations in the surrounding towns, we found that getting in touch with the people inside to get assistance was not easy. We expressed that to the commission, and we listened to the commission, and the result of the hearing with the commission is the amendment that was added to the article tonight, which is to require a full-service island at any self-service station. And I apologize for any misunderstanding about the question that was asked at the pre-meeting, but when you've come out of a meeting with the Commission on Disability, and when you've been told by people that you have to worry about the disabled or the physically challenged and the elderly, I think we answered the question inappropriately. There will be no discrimination at the island. Once it's designated as the full-service island, any person, elderly, young, capable, incapable, will be able to obtain a full-service attendant, and the article requires that a full-service attendant be on duty at all times. So I just wanted to give you a little history as to how the amendment occurred. It came as a result of working with the various boards in the town of Milford. We also heard those concerns at the planning board. We're well aware that the self-service station articles have been placed before this board before. However, we felt with the new technology and the concession on behalf of my client to set up a full-service island, which will of course be required of all station owners, was an excellent compromise that provides people in the town of Milford with the opportunity to pump their own gas or to have their gas pumped for them. We appreciate the opportunity to make the presentation. Peter Garrett, Volter Oil is a family-owned company. Peter is here tonight if anybody has a specific question about that. But again, we believe that having a full-service island with an attendant there all the time will ameliorate any problems that otherwise might occur with self-service stations. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Any other voter care to be heard? Gentlemen way in the back. Way in the back, I'm sorry. Oh, Sal Saminho.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sal Saminho, and I am precinct eight. Few years ago, when this came up, it went down big, and I wasn't smart enough to do any research on it, but I did this time. Let me first tell you, I'm eighty-five years old and handicapped. Don't judge a book by its cover. My wife is handicapped, so I know when you go out, as it was said a few years ago, that no one comes out when you're handicapped. We didn't have the button. Now the law says you have a button. It is time Milford got in with all the other towns. Now, the young man that told you that someone said that there's no savings. I wasn't a college graduate, but I do know this. Today, I filled my gas tank for two dollars and sixty-one cents a gallon at Speedway before Market Basket. I came back to Milford and I came off 495, it's three dollars at Mobil. That's simple math. When someone tells you you don't save any money, putting this in your gas tank outside of Milford for twenty-two dollars or filling up here for thirty is a savings. I don't care how you look at it. The gentleman that told you, whoever they are, there must be gas stations and they want to make more money. What I'm saying to you, when there's only one gas station, this is the time to try it. The Board of Selectmen, if you press a button and they don't come out, you can take action. I have taken my wife, because she can't pump her own gas, just to see, because this time I didn't want to come before you, stupid, and not know what I'm talking about. I didn't have to wait, they come out. And the other part of that is to say this to you, I don't want anyone who would build a gas station to not want to sell gas, whether it's a button or whatever. Doesn't make any sense. Give it a chance, ladies and gentlemen. You can stop it if the guy isn't doing it, it's only one. It deserves a shot to save money. And I'm going to just say this, someone told me not to, but you know me, if you've seen me long enough in politics, I got to say it. Anyone here who buys gas out of Milford should be voting for this. I'm not going to ask you to stand up, because then I'll lose all my friends.
Any other voter care to be heard? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's RJ Sheedy, I'm in precinct five. In twenty eighteen, we live in an automatic world. We have ATMs at the bank, in our grocery stores, we have self-checkouts. I don't know why, in an automatic world, we would not accept self-service gas stations in town. As the previous speaker just said, in Bellingham, it is true, it is cheaper. A lot of my friends are young, we are on budgets, so we do shop around for our gas. And outside of towns where there are self-services, it is cheaper. So I would just urge you all to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Someone hasn't spoken. Way back there in precinct seven, young lady? Yes. Six.
Hi, Christine Crane, precinct six. Just a question. So any gas station that's going to have self-service will have a safety feature as part of it? How many gas stations currently have that? And how will we know if they don't have it? And what could we expect for them to get it in?
Any voter care to be heard? If not, any other voter care to be heard? Yes. Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Dr. Richard Hall, precinct one. The other night at the pre-town meeting, we, people from Volter, and we had a little bit better discussion, which I was hoping we'd have tonight, but we're losing sight of the fact that this is not requiring every gas station to become self-service. Here in the United States, we have choices. It's like we have Big Y, Stop &amp; Shop, Shaws. Nobody's saying that you have to go to Shaws, you have to go to Big Y, or Stop &amp; Shop, or whatever. We make that choice. If you don't want to go to a self-service station, you don't have to go to a self-service station. I'm not an authority to answer for that prior speaker, but to my knowledge, there's no gas station in Milford that meets self-service. If they decided, as the president of Volter said the other night, if they decided that they wanted to become self-service, they would then have to go through the permitting process, just like they did. They would have to do reconstruction of their facility, they would have to have the fire suppression. And also, just the other, Milford is only one of four towns in the state of Massachusetts that does not allow self-service station. The other night, I asked those in attendance, and there was over fifty people at the pre-town meeting, and how many people use self-service. And three-quarters of the people raised their hand. So we're all going out of town, as Sal Saminho said, eight-dollar savings is an eight-dollar savings. Thank you. Please vote for this article.
Any other voter care to be heard on the motion? Motion's made to move the previous question, which again is an attempt to shut off debate, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the previous question, rise or remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed to moving the previous question, rise or remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports fourteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two, seventeen in favor, none opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three, seventeen in favor, six opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four, seventeen in favor, none opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five, twenty-two in favor, two opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six, twenty-one in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven. Precinct seven, eighteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct eight. Fifteen in favor, three opposed. And precinct eight, at large. At large, fifteen in favor, zero opposed. One hundred and fifty-six having voted in the affirmative, fourteen in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired. The question now comes upon the motion that the town vote to amend section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws use regulation schedule relating to self-service gasoline stations as follows. Section 2.3, the use regulation schedule, the commercial use of a gasoline station slash self-service would be allowed in the CB, CC, IA, IB, and IC zones, with the condition that self-service gasoline stations shall maintain at least one active attendant service pump island at all times. Since this is an amendment to our zoning bylaw, requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor of the motion as presented will rise or remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise or remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one, thirteen in favor, one opposed. All right, precinct two. Precinct two, twelve in favor, five opposed. Precinct two, twelve in favor, five opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three, twenty-one in favor, one opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four, sixteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five, twenty in favor, four opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six, eighteen in favor, three opposed. Precinct seven. Precinct seven, seventeen in favor, three opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight, sixteen in favor, three opposed. At large. At large, twelve in favor, three opposed. One hundred forty-five having voted in the affirmative, twenty-four in the negative. One hundred and sixty-nine votes having been cast. The necessary two-thirds would be one hundred and thirteen votes, so the motion has been carried. Article twelve. Town council, barney.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning from single-family residential, RB, to neighborhood commercial, CB, the following four parcels of property. The northerly.
The motions were made to waive the reading of the remainder of the article if it's exactly as appears in the warrant. Is it?
It is.
It is. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the article, which consists mainly of the legal description? If not, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Does the planning board have? I'm sorry, does the finance committee have recommendation?
Refer to planning board.
Okay. Does the planning board have a report?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on September 18th, 2018, regarding the subject of Article 12, at which time the Planning Board voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article 12 is the application of Kevin Meehan and Rudolph Perotti to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning four parcels of property off East Main Street from RB Residential to CB Neighborhood Commercial, which represents an expansion of the adjacent CB District. The Planning Board recommends Article 12 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, which is an amendment to our zoning bylaw and requires a two-thirds vote. Since no one has spoken in opposition to the article as, or the motion as presented, I will take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion to rezone manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports fifteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two, fourteen in favor, three opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three, twenty-two in favor, zero opposed. Precinct four. Is it fifteen or sixteen? Fifteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five, twenty-two in favor, zero opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six, twenty in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven. Precinct seven, twenty in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight, eighteen in favor, none opposed. At large. Fifteen in favor, zero opposed at large. One hundred and sixty-one having voted in the affirmative, six in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired. The motion is carried. Article thirteen. Motion made in second, we pass over Article thirteen. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over? Mr. Akudi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Amy, nice job. Question, about five to seven years ago, this article had come up, as far as housing is concerned in rental agencies. I just want to know why we're passing over this article tonight and will it appear at some future town meeting? That's all. Thank you.
Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Valani?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the building commissioner wants to research this a little further, along with town council. We do envision that it will come up at a future town meeting, but they want to do more research with the state, and that's the reason that the determination has been made to pass it over.
Any other person want to speak on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried to pass over Article thirteen. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be utilized to fund the cost items contained within a collective bargaining agreement between the Milford Dispatchers Union and the town of Milford, including but not limited to wages and salaries.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be utilized to fund the cost items contained within a collective bargaining agreement between the Milford Dispatchers Union and the town of Milford, including but not limited to wages and salaries. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Select one, King Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article seeks to fund the cost of items contained in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Public Safety Dispatchers Union, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 218, AFL-CIO, signed in June of 2018. The additional cost is forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This amount will supplement salaries and wages retroactive to July 1, 2017, and covers fiscal years 2018 and 2019. I ask for your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Article fifteen, I move that the town vote to transfer funds between light items and raise and appropriate the sum of nineteen thirty-three to supplement certain salary and wage budgets, as voted under Article four of the May 14, 2018 annual town meeting, for the purpose of fully funding the new salary and wage levels for clerks, various boards, and committees, as recommended by the Personnel Board, and passed under Article two of the May 14, 2018 annual town meeting, for the purpose, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, as follows.
Has everyone received the handout relative to the transfer from one department to another as proposed by Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Motion made in second, we dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motions. It's exactly as appears in your handout. Any vote to care to be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion. Those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion to dispense is carried. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Mister Brown.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as a result of the recent study performed by the Personnel Board regarding the wage and salary levels for clerks, various boards, and committees, these changes are being submitted. The Personnel Board recommendation was passed under Article two of the May 14, 2018 annual town meeting, to be effective July 1, 2018. And I'll just clarify two things here. One, on the transfer. The reason for the transfer is that some of these salary levels decreased, so there were some salary levels that were high. They decreased. Those funds that were already passed in the budget are now made available to us to transfer those excess funds into some of the wage and salaries levels that actually increased. So that's that portion of it. The portion for the actual raise and appropriation is nineteen hundred and thirty-three dollars, and that's the difference between what was available and already approved and what we need to supplement the budget for these positions. I am requesting your support in favor of Article fifteen.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen. Mr. Renault, are you a registered voter in the town of Milford?
Yes.
Well, you can't, you're not a town meeting member, though, so you can't present the motion. Mr. Who, there was an issue that... Only town meeting members can present motions. Any registered voter can speak on the motion, but you must be a town meeting member to present the motion.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Article sixteen, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the tree warden to remove dead, dying, dangerous, and/or compromised trees throughout the town of Milford, thereby promoting public safety and simultaneously reducing the potential for power outages and road closings.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Mr. Renault.
Town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, several years of drought, gypsy moth infestation have killed over two hundred trees or been causing to be compromised where they're unsafe. On last Thursday night, several trees failed due to a small storm that came through. Some of these trees were on that list. And in order to prevent this from happening, or at least minimize it, I would ask for your support on this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Take a seat, Mr. Renault. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, at the pre-town meeting forum last week, we were, the attendees were told that none of these trees are on private property. Can somebody please confirm for this body that none of these trees are on private property or state property? Thank you.
Does any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Renault.
None of these trees are located on private or state property.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the tree warden to remove dead, dying, dangerous, and/or compromised trees throughout the town of Milford, thereby promoting public safety and simultaneously reducing the potential for power outages and road closings. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seventeen. Mr. Pillip.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of two million dollars from the sewer department retained earnings fund 6,000 to be used to increase the sewer stabilization account fund 8350.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of two million dollars from the sewer department retained earnings fund 6,000 to be used to increase the sewer stabilization account fund 8350. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Presser or Pillip.
Good evening. The last time we did a transfer from retained earnings to the sewer stabilization fund was in FY15. Subsequently, we pulled out 3.2 million dollars in FY16 for the sledge handling facility. This article is looking to replenish the stabilization fund for a better investment opportunity. I ask for your support on this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eighteen. Motion made in second, we pass over Article eighteen. Does any vote to care to be heard in the motion to pass over Article eighteen? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion to pass over is carried. Article nineteen. Select one, Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 220,000 dollars to be spent on the jurisdiction of the Milford Youth Commission for the purpose of hiring a consultant to perform engineering and design services, prepare construction drawings, and thereafter to install air conditioning for the headhouse of the Milford Youth Center.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 220,000 dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Youth Commission for the purpose of hiring a consultant to perform engineering and design services, prepare construction drawings, and thereafter to install air conditioning for the headhouse of the Milford Youth Center. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Welch.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you remember, when the youth center was originally designed for construction, we had three plans, A, B, and C, and we tried to stay within the guidelines of what the finance committee had allowed us. Under the construction, it went a little bit over budget, but never in the phase that we chose, and I was on the building committee and the youth commission at the time, we put into design that we knew at some point we would come back for the air conditioning of the headhouse. And when I say the headhouse, it's very important for people to understand is there was some confusion, and they thought that we were going to air conditioning the whole building. That is incorrect. We're air conditioning the headhouse. And so that's what we're here for you tonight for, is the funding to seek the engineering studies so that we can move forward with installing the air conditioning in the headhouse. Thank you.
Ms. Ward addressing the meeting. If not, Jennifer Ward.
Good evening, town meeting members. My name is Jen Ward, and I am the director of the Milford Youth Center. I'm here tonight to communicate the need and to ask for your support to appropriate the funds for the engineering, design, and construction drawings and the installation of the air conditioning to the headhouse of the Milford Youth Center. For those of you who may be unaware, the headhouse represents the main floor, including the, an office space, a game room, and a kitchen lounge area. In addition to it, includes a second floor or mezzanine level, including an office, arts and crafts room, multipurpose space, computer lab, and conference room. This allocation will also include the engineering design work for two basement rooms, our workout gym, and future dance and music space due to grants and private fundraising that the youth commission has done. The main purpose and need for the AC system is to provide a healthy and safe environment for our staff, the youth participants, including the 627 registered after-school and unduplicated members from our 2017-2018 after-school program and 100 summer camp families that utilize... eighteen after-school program, and a hundred summer camp families that utilize our facility, and also community rentals and events, including the forty different groups and organizations that utilize our facility since the renovation, and numerous other events that our Youth Commission hosts. This system will also maintain the integrity of the building and prevent any damage due to extreme humidity in the building, especially considering the last two summers that we've all experienced. Finally, we have had two independent studies done that have recommended the installation of an HVAC system to help maintain this integrity of the building due to the humidity and high occupancy that we see, and the need for a mechanical system for fresh-conditioned air. Finally, the renovation team and Youth Commission have made active steps to plan for this eventual AC in the building during the renovation and post-capital planning process. Due to it not being in the final scope, due to budgetary concerns, prioritizing the building's stabilization and code compliance, including fire code and ADA, the committee and design team made sure to incorporate important items for it to be installed in the future. Due to both the historic nature and masonry construction of the existing building design, the conventional ducted HVAC solutions are neither practical nor economical for this approach. Instead, both the architects and engineers during the renovation and the engineer, we recently received a quote from, recommended the technology that we're asking you to allocate for VFR, um, refrigerant flow. In addition, this is why the design called for the anticipated structural support beams that already exist in the building, for, to support the heat pump that would be on the roof, and for doors to separate the gym and the headhouse so that the latter one could be air-conditioned. I would like to thank you for your time and opportunity to be recognized tonight and ask for the Town Meeting's support for Article nineteen.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Mister Morris.
Mister Visconti.
It is my understanding that the Youth Commission will be back here again at a later date seeking hundreds of thousands of dollars to dehumidify other parts of the building. Can someone explain to me why we are not incorporating this work into, in with the air conditioning work to maybe realize some savings by having all of this work done at once? Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article twenty. Attorney Boddy.
Mister Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the Town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of malt beverages and wine not to be consumed on the premises, package store, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows. Section one, notwithstanding section seventeen of chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws, the licensing authority of the town of Milford may, upon receipt of a completed application, payment of any applicable fees, after a public hearing and all due process, and in its sole discretion, grant an additional license for the sale of wines and malt beverages not to be drunk on the premises pursuant to section fifteen of said chapter one thirty-eight to Central Gas and Market, Inc., at one eighty-six Central Street in the town of Milford. The license shall be subject to all of said chapter one thirty-eight except said section seventeen. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Refer to Selectmen.
Refer to Selectmen. Okay. Any other vote to care to be heard? Mister Akoudi.
Thank you, Mister Maria, fellow Town Meeting Members. To my knowledge, I don't think we have a problem here in town with having an insufficient amount of liquor stores. This article is increasing the availability of liquor to some minors that may not be cognizant of what that can happen to them. My feeling is this, we have enough liquor stores, they do a great job, they place themselves, and there's no need to have another one. Thank you.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? Attorney Fonzio. Uh, Ferreira, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mister Moderator, Town Meeting Members. My name is Suzette Ferreira. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Consigliere and Bracato located on Main Street in Milford. I'm here tonight representing Central Gas and Market. I'm also here with Kevin Ribero, who is the General Manager. This is a small, family-owned business located at one eighty-six Central Street. It has been in business since two thousand and eleven. Kevin manages the store with his family, his parents, and his sister. Um, it's a small mini-market convenience store where they sell everyday items, including groceries, uh, snack foods, and toiletries. They are looking to expand their business by selling wine and malt beverages. Um, it is my understanding that the town of Milford currently has eleven liquor licenses for the retail sale of, of wine and malt beverages. In order for us to be able to sell a, uh, in his convenience store, the Board of Selectmen would have to petition the Legislature for an additional one. It is my understanding that licenses are issued based on the town's population and, um, size, but it's also, as the town grows and the population increases, those licenses are not automatically increased. So therefore, this is the only way to get an additional license for the sale of the wine and malt beverages, and, uh, we ask you for your support tonight. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mister Morrison.
Um, from information I received from the Town Administrator, we currently have seven package stores in Milford. You could argue that three of them are close to the bike path. We currently have eleven outlets where you can buy beer and wine, uh, not to be consumed on the premises. We have a brewery. Uh, that brings it to currently eighteen locations in Milford where one can purchase, um, alcohol. The nineteen, uh, I'm sorry, the twenty-ten federal census for the town of Milford found the population to be at twenty-eight thousand. When you look into that a little deeper, you find that only twenty thousand people are age twenty-one or older. With the current number of liquor licenses we have, if you divide that, um, nineteen by twenty thousand, you find that we have, uh, a location to purchase alcohol for every one thousand and fifty, uh, residents in Milford over the age of twenty-one. Um, at a previous meeting, you all vigorously voted to, uh, ban, uh, a retail marijuana store, uh, expressing great concern that you should save the children. So I have to wonder, uh, why that doesn't apply in this case. I have to wonder how many more liquor licenses, how many more outlets we need to have in the town of Milford. And so I would, uh, I would ask you to, uh, vote no on this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Mister Morris.
Mister Visconti.
As far as I'm concerned, the quota system for issuing alcoholic license is archaic, and I think a lot of people out there will agree. What is the concern? Might be a little more competition with pricing? Might, the consumer, consumer might save a few bucks? Is that the concern? I ask you to approve this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion that the Town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of initial license for the sale of malt beverages and wines not to be consumed on the premises, um, located at, uh, one eighty-six Central Street in the town of Milford. All those in, all those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. All right, Mister, Mister Akoudi doubts the vote. Seven people, uh, have to doubt the vote in order for us to have a, uh, Mister Morrison. Order in Precinct, uh, Attorney, and that's four. Need three more people. Two individuals there. Please identify yourself, just yell out your name and address.
Joe Alford, Precinct there.
That's right. I recognize Joe. The other Joe Alford.
Okay. Right next...
Seven persons having risen to doubt the vote, I'll ask all those in favor of the motion to rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors.
Precinct one.
Precinct one, nine in favor, six opposed.
Precinct two.
Precinct two, nine in favor, five opposed.
Precinct three.
Precinct three, sixteen in favor, six opposed.
Precinct four.
Twelve in favor, five opposed.
Precinct four, twelve in favor, five opposed. Precinct five.
Precinct five, seventeen in favor, four opposed.
Precinct six.
Precinct six, thirteen in favor, three opposed.
Precinct seven.
Precinct seven, fourteen in favor, six opposed.
Precinct eight.
Precinct eight, nine in favor, seven opposed.
At large, at large.
Sixteen in favor, zero opposed.
Thirteen in favor, eight opposed in Precinct six. Correction made by the precinct monitor. Uh... Twenty-one, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-six, forty-five, fifty-four, fifty-five, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, ten, eleven, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-seven, thirty-three, and eleven, is forty-four? One fourteen, forty-four? Oops. Okay, you got nine and six, nine and five, sixteen and six, twelve and five, seventeen and four, thirteen and eight. Fourteen and six. He changed it to thirteen and eight. And then nine and seven, sixteen and zero. So I get fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-six, forty-five, fifty-four, fifty-five, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, ten, eleven, fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-two, fourteen, seven, thirty-three, thirty-eight, forty-four, from fourteen, forty-four? One hundred fourteen having voted in the affirmative, forty-four in the negative, the motion has been carried. It must be due to my new hearing aids, so, uh, that's what... Okay, next article. Article twenty-one.
Moderator.
Mister Boddy.
This most, motion will be a slight amendment from the article which appeared in the warrant, Mister Moderator. Mister Moderator, Town Meeting Members, the difference in this is that, uh, the body of the special legislation that, that is to be presented to the state legislature is for all alcoholic beverages. In the introduction to, to the, uh, the article, it describes it as all alcoholic beverages, and yet in the body of what is anticipated as the language of the special, special act, it says wines and malt. Therefore, I move that the Town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows. Section one, notwithstanding section seventeen of chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws, the licensing authority of the town of Milford may, upon receipt of a completed application, payment of any applicable fees, after a public hearing and all due process, and in its sole discretion, grant an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises pursuant to section fifteen of said chapter one thirty-eight to one thirty-eight Water Street Meat Market... Strike that. To Water Street Meat Market, LLC, doing business as Water Street Meat Market at three Water Street, Milford, Mass. The license shall be subject to all of said chapter one thirty-eight except said section seventeen. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Motion made in second, the Town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows. Section one, notwithstanding section seventeen of chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws, the licensing authority of the town of Milford may, upon receipt of a completed application, payment of any applicable fees, after a public hearing and all do note, due process, and in its sole discretion, grant an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises pursuant to section fifteen of said chapter one thirty-eight to one, of chapter one thirty-eight... Chapter one thirty-eight to, uh, Water Street Meat, right, to Water Street Meat Market, LLC, doing business as Water Street Meat Market at three Water Street, Milford, Mass. The license shall be subject to all of said chapter one thirty-eight except said section seventeen and section two, as the act shall take effect upon its passage. Finance Committee is...
Refer to Planning Board.
Refer to Planning Board. Okay. Any vote to care to be heard? Yes. Order in Precinct three. Kate Mastriani.
Kate Mastriani, Precinct three, um, I don't think we need another liquor store that is less than, I mean, I can't even throw a snowball, but it is less than a snowball thrown away from an existing liquor store, and I suggest that you vote no on this. I don't think we need another liquor store that close.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Evelyn Damm, Evelyn Von Temple.
That was my dad's drugstore, Daverin's Pharmacy. Uh, we lived behind the drugstore. My father always had a liquor license at Daverin's Drive-In Pharmacy.
Just one, give me five minutes.
I'm sorry, I... This is a Brazilian family that owns this property now. It's off the street, off of Main Street. I can remember when my father left where the Milford National Bank is on Main Street, where he had his drugstore, back in the nineteen... where he had his drugstore back in the nineteen forties, and moved to Three Water Street and was told, Tom Daverin, you will not survive. You're off of Main Street. Please give these people that have this market approval so they too may have the wine and malt beverages not to be drunk on the premises. Please vote yes on this article. I thank you.
Any other vote can be heard? Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article twenty-two. Mr. Bon Temple.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislative for special legislation to provide for incumbent town meeting members to become candidates for reelection by giving written notice to town clerk instead of by filing nomination papers, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows. Section one, chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three is hereby amended by striking out section four as most recently amended by section one of chapter one eighty of the Acts of two thousand and eleven and inserting in place thereof...
Request has been made to waive the reading of the remainder of the article if it's exactly as appears in the warrant. Have there been any changes?
It's not the text that appears in the warrant. No.
So continue reading, second paragraph, section four.
Section four. A, nominations of candidates for town meeting members to be elected under this act shall be made by...
Yes. He's going to read the motion as presented. The article that appeared in the warrant gives you notice that something's going to be happening with how many signatures you have to get or no signatures relative to running for town meeting. So whatever he presents now is the motion. Okay? I declared an amendment out of order because it wasn't within the scope, so I'm sure that this will be in the scope of what notice you've been given. Mr. Bon Temple, continue. You follow along and make changes in the warrant that you have. Section four, I think, is starting in the third paragraph, right?
Yes, I'll start again. Section four, A, nominations of candidates for town meetings members to be elected under this act shall be made by nomination papers, which shall bear no political designation, shall be signed by not less than thirty voters of the precinct in which the candidate resides, and should be filed with the town clerk at least thirty-five days before the election. No nomination papers shall be valid in respect to any candidate whose written acceptance is not thereon or attached thereto when filed. Section B, notwithstanding subsection A, the fourth paragraph of section ten of chapter fifty-three of the general laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, any incumbent town meeting member excluding an elected town meeting member who removes from one precinct to another or is so removed by revision of precincts may, without filing nomination papers, become a candidate for reelection as a town meeting member for the same precinct in which the incumbent member currently resides by giving written notice thereof to the town clerk at least thirty days before the election. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the change is in section four B? Is that where you made the change?
Yes, I think that, yeah. Well, there's a change in the preamble. I believe the preamble... I don't have it with me here, unfortunately. I think the preamble said for a current town meeting member, it was changed to incumbent, and then the other major changes were made to section four B. Yes, you're correct.
Okay. I'll read it again just so you can make any corrections to the warrant that you have. Motion that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen petition the legislature for special legislation to provide for incumbent town meeting members to become candidates for reelection by giving written notice to the town clerk instead of by filing nomination papers, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows. Section one, chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three is hereby amended by striking out section four as most recently amended by section one of chapter one eighty of the Acts of two thousand and one and inserting in place thereof the following section. Section four, A, nominations of candidates for town meeting members to be elected under this act shall be made by nomination papers, which shall bear no political designation, shall be signed by not less than thirty voters of the precinct in which the candidate resides and shall be filed with the town clerk at least thirty-five days before the election. No nomination papers shall be valid in respect to any candidate whose written acceptance is not thereon or attached thereto when filed. B, notwithstanding subsection A, the fourth paragraph of section ten of chapter fifty-three of the general laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, any incumbent town meeting member excluding an elected town meeting member who removes from one precinct to another or is so removed by revision of precincts may, without filing nomination papers, become a candidate for reelection as a town meeting member for the same precinct in which the incumbent member currently resides by giving written notice thereof to the town clerk at least thirty days before the election. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage. Does the Finance Committee have recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Mr. Bon Temple.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Michelangelo Bon Temple, clerk for the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee. First of all, refer to the... If you refer to anything, refer to the Finance Committee report that has the correct motion. The warrant is incorrect. As mentioned earlier this evening, one of the duties of the committee is to develop and maintain a comprehensive town meeting handbook. The subcommittee assigned to that task decided that a section of the handbook should be devoted to how to run for election at town meeting. The subcommittee reviewed the process with respect to the Legislative Act, which established our representative town meeting form of government in Milford, and found a discrepancy in the treatment of incumbents seeking election. The current practice is that incumbents can submit a written notice to the town clerk of their intention to seek reelection. However, the current section four of the Legislative Act states that nominations of all candidates for town meeting members, including incumbents, shall be made by nomination papers and shall be signed by not less than thirty voters of the precinct in which the candidate resides. So the practice of an incumbent becoming a candidate for reelection by giving written notice to the town clerk contravenes the statutory law. The subcommittee's research indicated that the practice of an incumbent giving written notice predates the current town clerk's tenure, which began in two thousand and six, over twelve years ago. It probably happened more than, closer to twenty years ago, something like that. All the committee wants to do is to be able to articulate in the section of the handbook on how to run for elections to town meeting a process that is consistent with the statute. At last regular meeting of Monday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, the committee voted to preserve the inherited practice by recommending that the town petition of the legislative for special legislation to change section four, so that incumbents can submit a written notice to the town clerk of their intention to seek reelection. The motion before this body would resolve that discrepancy. I want you to bear in mind that if this motion is defeated, then for the next annual town election, up to eighty incumbent town meeting members will be required to take out nomination papers that shall be signed by not less than thirty voters of the precinct in which the incumbent resides. So the committee asks you to vote favorably on this motion. Thank you.
Does any other vote can be heard? Yes. Mr. Cole.
Brian Cole, precinct eight. I'm confused. I don't understand why we're asking the legislature to grant us a special privilege over new coming candidates. I don't understand why we're avoiding this opportunity to get feedback from our neighbors on how we're doing as a town meeting. Before we vote, I just want us to consider, are we doing this because it's the right thing for the town of Milford, because it's the best way to preserve town meeting for the next generation, or if we're only doing this because it's the way it's always been done? I urge you to vote no.
Any other vote can be heard? Order in precinct two.
Andrew Johansson, precinct four. Mr. Moderator, when we discussed this in pre-town meeting on Tuesday night, the question came up, how does, how would this proposal if passed affect write-in candidacies? Many town meeting members, myself included, got elected on write-in candidacies. So my question, Mr. Moderator, is twofold. A, has the town council determined exactly what the legal status is of write-in candidacies? And that was not known at pre-town meeting last Tuesday. And B, if this proposal is passed, how would that affect write-in candidacies? Thank you.
Does any vote can be heard? Yes, Mr. Wheelock.
I look forward to hearing from a couple of other people on this subject tonight because it's a good, useful issue to... It's a good, useful issue to defuse the power of incumbency by requiring incumbents to actually solicit the support of members within their districts. It is a... It could be considered a hardship for some people to gather that many signatures, but in general, I would say it is not unrealistic to say, go out and canvass your neighborhood one more time and re-contact with your constituents and get those signatures. A no vote on this is a great idea to defuse the power of incumbency and make sure that actual town meeting members who show up reliably and vote maintain their positions, and no show or inconsistent show-uppers don't get the benefit of incumbency with a simple signature on a, it is my intention to run again. I urge your... I recommend you to not support this article.
Yes. Order in precinct three.
Stephanie Abisla, precinct three. While I do acknowledge the previous speakers diffusing the incumbency, one of the difficulties we've had in town has been not filling the seats. And whether you're an incumbent or whether you're a new person looking for office or whether you're a write-in, it comes down to going out to vote, and your vote matters. The names aren't there, there's nobody to vote for. So your ultimate choice is to vote. How we get the names on the ballot may or may not be as important as going to the polls to vote. Thank you.
Any other vote can be heard? Mr. Morrison.
Richard Morrison, precinct one. We've been told that our current practice contravenes state law. So it occurred to me to wonder, what is the status of this meeting? If we have eighty or more people who have been re-elected by signing a letter provided by the town clerk in contravention of the state law, are decisions of this meeting or previous meetings legal? I have no idea.
Any other vote can be heard? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Edward Bertorelli, precinct two, formerly of precinct four. This marks my thirtieth year as a town meeting member, and we've gone through iterations of thirty signatures needed at every election, a sign-in needed recently. The question comes down to a common sense question. We have a very difficult time in many precincts getting enough people to run for office. To me, the last thing we would want to do is to make it more difficult to run. It reminds you of an organization that gets preoccupied with rules in any kind of organization, and the membership of the organization is declining, but we're still occupied in the rules. It's very important that we keep this town meeting as a healthy organization, and I think the sign-in mechanism is a valid one. As I say, the proof's in the pudding because we have many precincts where there are no contests, where there are many vacancies, and as someone said, a number of people are elected by write-in. So I would suggest we support the findings of the Town Meeting Study Committee and go back to the... And revert to, you know, the signature where we get the signature for permission to run. If someone is going to run for, as a new member, they get the thirty signatures. Thank you.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be utilized by the Milford Highway Surveyor for the acquisition and installation of flex post-meeting markers within the Route eighty-five slash Cedar Street roadway immediately north of the intersection with Fortune Boulevard and Dilla Street.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be utilized by the Milford Highway Surveyor for the acquisition and installation of flex post-meeting markers within the Route eighty-five Cedar Street roadway immediately north of the intersection with Fortune Boulevard, Dilla Street. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote can be heard?
Mr. Moderator? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, for those of you familiar with the Wendy's intersection and the difficulty we've had there lately, especially with Lake Wendy, that has been problematic over the last few years. We're working with that business to make sure that that drainage situation is resolved. But notwithstanding that drainage problem, exiting Wendy's across six lanes, if somebody were to exit improperly, would put them and others at risk, and it happens fairly frequently. So when people want to go towards four ninety-five exiting Wendy's on eighty-five, they actually travel across six lanes. So the article seeks twenty thousand dollars to purchase and install flex post-meeting markers with yellow reflectors along the center line of Cedar Street Route eighty-five for approximately two hundred and eighty feet from the corner of Wendy's towards Hopkinton. As I said, currently, this area presents a dangerous traffic situation, and the installation of the median markers will prevent motorists from being able to cross over these six lanes of traffic and greatly improves traffic safety. I urge your support for this article. Thank you very much.
Any other vote can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Article twenty-four. Mr. Rakhoudi.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Park Commission to be utilized to provide labor and materials for holiday lighting and for other associated electrical needs at Draper Memorial Park.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate, or, I'm sorry. Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission to be utilized to provide labor and material for holiday lighting and other associated electrical needs at Draper Memorial Park. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Raccoudy.
Presently, the electrical capacity at Draper Park is limited and consists of only an irrigation system and a couple of outlets in one corner of the park. We have had numerous requests to increase the electrical power. This is a limited service that is at the park right now and is shared services with some of the traffic lights that are nearby, and this is becoming a safety concern. So I urge you to support this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Mr. Raccoudy. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission to be utilized to conduct a feasibility study of Fino Field Pool to provide options for renovation, expansion, or replacing the pool.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission to be utilized to conduct a feasibility study of the Fino Field Pool to provide options for renovation, expansion, or replacing the pool. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Raccoudy.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This feasibility study will establish basic pool needs, identify and describe existing conditions, and provide options for renovating, expanding, or replacing this pool.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article twenty-six. Mr. Raccoudy.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $34,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission to purchase a new riding lawnmower with a 104-inch cutting deck and associated trailer.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $34,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission to purchase a new riding mower with a 104-inch cutting deck and associated trailer. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Raccoudy?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This new lawnmower is a Hustler mower. It's equipped, again, with a 104-inch cutting deck and has mulching capabilities. This greatly enhances both labor efficiency and quality of maintenance. This mower will be replacing a 2003 model mower that only has a 48-inch deck.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Article twenty-seven. Mr. Raccoudy.
Last one. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $43,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission to replace the current 2001 model-year truck with a new pickup truck. Said truck also is to be used for snow and ice removal.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $43,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Parks Commission to replace the current 2001 model-year truck with a new pickup truck. Said truck also to be used for snow and ice removal. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? Mr. Raccoudy.
Town meeting members, this new pickup truck will be replacing a 2001 model truck. It will be an F-350 four-by-four with a plow-ready package so it can be used for winter, in the winter, for snow and ice removal. The 2001 truck that we have now is actually past its last legs, and it does not have a plow package. So I urge you to vote favorable for this article.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. We are now approaching the bewitching hour of ten o'clock. In accordance with the vote that we took at the annual town meeting, we cannot continue unless we have a majority vote. No motion can be presented after ten o'clock unless we have a majority vote. So the question is, all those in favor of proceeding further after ten o'clock indicate, manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. We'll continue. Article twenty-eight. Yes. Mr. Chris Fulley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $190,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor to purchase a new truck for plowing, sanding, hauling, and road maintenance.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $190,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor to purchase a new truck for plowing, sanding, hauling, and road maintenance. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Our Highway Surveyor, Mr. Chris Fulley.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. The need for this article is for the replacement of a 22-year-old plow truck, sand truck. It's in need of costly repairs, frame repairs, and it basically won't pass inspection. It'd be cost prohibitive at this time to actually fix it, being 22-years-old. If approved, the replacement truck will be comparable with similar equipment. This will be used as a plow and sander as well as being used to haul materials and everyday operations. We will be reutilizing the present sander to be used on the new truck, and the savings about another $20,000.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Article twenty-nine. Mr. Chris Fulley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $180,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor to purchase a sidewalk tractor equipped with a snowplow, snowblower, V-plow, and sander.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $180,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor to purchase a sidewalk tractor equipped with a snowblower, power, V-plow, and sander. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? Mr. Chris Fulley.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. If approved, this machine will be replacing a 1999 sidewalk tractor that's pretty much obsolete. The current tractor is in need of costly repairs. Tracks alone are $5,000. It's not worth fixing. The new machine will be equipped with a snowblower, which is key to snow removal for us. We have two machines presently that have a snowblower, and when we have the snow that we've had the last couple of years, it's definitely needed. This machine's more efficient. It's a newer style machine. It's user-friendly. The operator doesn't get abused and bounced around, and, you know, after 24 hours of plowing. I ask for your support on this article.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 to be utilized by the Milford Highway Surveyor and the town engineer for any and all items required to ensure that the town remains in compliance with the Environmental Protection Agency's Stormwater General Permit for Stormwater Discharge for Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems.
Motion made in second, the town vote to... To raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 to be utilized by the Milford Highway Surveyor and/or the town engineer for any and all items required to ensure that the town remains in compliance with the Environmental Protection Agency's Stormwater-General Permit for Stormwater Discharges from Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems. MS-IV's Phase Two of the permit. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're entering into a very big thing. We're entering into a very big process, and this is the very first day of a 20-year permit. So I think for everybody's knowledge, and so you understand what we're getting into, and you realize the cost and where it's going, we have a little presentation for you guys. We hired a consultant to come in and do this, to give you this information, because you do need to know.
I understand you're requesting permission for Jean Hagerty, a senior associate of Water Resources, to address the meeting. She's not a registered voter in the town of Milford, would therefore require unanimous consent to address the meeting. Does anyone object to hearing her presentation? Hearing no objections. Jean Hagerty.
Good evening. My name's Jean Hagerty. I work for Wood Environmental Associates. We've been working with the town for several months on their environmental compliance issues, and I'm going to just take a few minutes and give you kind of a context for the request for $400,000 and where the stormwater program is going in town. So briefly, I'm going to just give you a sense of the actual regulations, and these are EPA mandated regulations that have been in place for quite a few years. I'm going to talk about the impact on Milford particularly, talk about costs, about what you've been spending for the last couple of years, where those costs are going, what the request is this year, and then at the end, give you some perspective for the 20-year long-term that was mentioned earlier, the phosphorus control plan because you're in the Charles River watershed and what that might cost, and how we need to be thinking carefully about how we met into those costs. So the Clean Water Act passed in 1972 basically says that anybody that discharges anything to a water body has to have a permit. So the permit first applied to wastewater treatment plants, and so back in the day, I worked at Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, so all wastewater discharges had to go through a permit process. They expanded that process over the years to industrial discharges and to municipal stormwater discharges. They decided that we needed to go through a pretty specific permit for municipal stormwater. Systems that were in place weren't being enforced or regulated in any way, so the EPA came in in 1999 and started with the really big cities. Anybody that over 100,000 population had to have a permit in 1999. So City of Boston, Philadelphia, big cities across the nation. In 2003, they lowered that standard to basically any community with over 10,000 people. So Milford fell into the second round of the small, what we call the MS-IV permit. Okay, that's managing your municipal stormwater system. All right? And the permit initially came out in 2003. It basically only hit the highlights of what you needed to do. You needed to map your system. You need to know where everything was. You needed to know where your outfalls were, because that's what was being regulated. You needed to start to do some public education, put ordinances in place, and have some enforcement authority. So the permit from 2003 to 2008, your first five-year cycle, got started. You've been complying with it for years. You put ordinances in place. You got the public outreach done. You have good mapping of your system, and so you complied. In 2008, the second five-year cycle is supposed to come along. However, there was lots of pushback in Region One and in Massachusetts in particular about the new permit. So we had several versions of that, and a new permit didn't actually come out and be approved until 2016. So the permit got approved, and then the EPA and MassEP were sued by several Massachusetts communities, and that delayed the permit for a year. But now the courts have decided the permit is required. You need to comply with your MS-IV permit. So the pieces of it are pretty standard. Again, the first five years, not too bad, but they've ratcheted up the requirements for this next permit. So I'll give you a sense of what those look like. So in addition to this regulatory permit, the permit itself and compliance, it impacts everything that you do. All right? So your operation of your stormwater system, which is everything from sweeping the streets, which is a permit requirement, to catch basin cleaning, to taking care of your system, to making sure no illicit discharges are dumping those in your storm system, all those things now are affected by the permit. And on top of that, you have an old system that's starting to crack and fail. So your stormwater costs are not just the permit. I don't want you to think that's all you're paying for, but it's a big driver of why the costs are going up. So everyday compliance pieces, manage your existing system are part of the problem. So we looked at what you were spending in 2017. We went back and looked, we did a study a couple of months ago. First of all, we looked at the parts of your system. You have, think about it as a community, you've invested significantly in what's already in the ground for stormwater. We looked at the replacement value of all the storm drains and culverts and detention basins, and they're worth about $80 million. Okay? So that's the investment you've already made as a community. All right? Now, every year, your staff is managing that system, and it's costing you about $600,000 a year. All right? Streetsweeping, planning, environmental compliance, all the different pieces that go into actually maintaining your detention ponds, all that work goes in there at about $600,000 a year. So that's what we had in the past. Let's add the new permit into this, and I won't go through all the details of that, but there's some big money pieces that go into what's going on the next couple of years of your permit. And one of those is something called the Phosphorus Control Plan. Again, so in the Charles River, the pollution level for phosphorus has been deemed exceedingly high, and so anybody that discharged into the Charles now has a compliance plan where they have to cut back on phosphorus discharges through their stormwater system. All right? So you have, in the first five years of your permit, you need to come up with a plan of how you're going to manage that phosphorus, and that has some large dollars associated with long-term. You have to do lots of other little things. You have to plan for illicit discharges. You have to now do more mapping of your system. All right? So the costs are going up and up. Your catch basin cleaning requirements have ratcheted up, and your streetsweeping has ratcheted up. So the needs are more significant to the, our estimate about 59% increase in cost from where you were last year. All right? So we talked about, it was talking, spending about $600,000. And over the next five years, the average will be around, closer to $950,000 to $1 million a year. So you can see the impact of this new permit is about $350,000 to $400,000 a year. So this year's request, and what's in front of you, is to actually fund this additional money. Right? So it's $400,000, and it's lots of different pieces. It's the environmental regulation itself, it's documentation, it's mapping, it's the planning, it's increasing that streetsweeping and catch basin cleaning, and now it's added a monitoring aspect to it. So what you're going to have to do... So, what you're going to have to do is actually do some water quality testing and monitoring to see what's coming out of your discharge pipes, and you've got to start that program. And that information may help you, all right? Because now, the phosphorus numbers that are out there have been based on modeling and some limited testing. You have the ability to do some testing in order to comply with your permit, but that also can might be used to change what your phosphorus loads are, so it might be to your benefit. So, you can see that that's the request that is before you, is to this, these dollars. But as you've heard, this is like the tip of the iceberg, because the phosphorus control numbers that we've been looking at for a couple of years, these are very specific in your permit. EPA actually gives you a number of pounds of phosphorus you have to remove over the next several years. So, you have 20 years from now to get it all done, but the first five years is planning, and the next 15 years, all right? So, what we're talking about now is about $1 million a year for the next five. In years six through 10, that's going to go up, and 10 to 20, it's going to go up more, because you're going to have to comply somewhere, I hope it's not this number, but the 40 to $50 million range is the kind of numbers we're talking about. And a lot of that is because there's a land component of that, all right? You're going to put wetlands, new wetlands in, you're going to build new structures, and you're going to put ponds in. There's both construction, there's planning, there's permitting, and there's land costs. So, potentially, that we're talking in the $40 million range, all right? Hopefully, it doesn't go there, but here's an example of what it costs per project, all right? Recently, you had some grant money, you had a grant to do a wetland project at Lower Hickory, excuse me, Lower Huckleberry Brook. This cost of this project alone was $376,000 for permitting and doing the work to put a basically treated wetland in place. So, now the stormwater is directed to this wetland, it does a great job of both managing both the velocity, your capacity, and doing some water treatment, and the treatment for this one facility took out 16 pounds of phosphorus, all right? So, you have to do 1,500 pounds of phosphorus over the next 20 years. So, you can see the kind of numbers we're talking about and why this is a big deal. In this case, there was some grant money available, I hope you can continue to take advantage of that. So, 60% of this project was paid by the federal government and 40% by the town. So, future expectations, there are things that your town staff are already looking to do. You've got to keep those costs down by looking at this regionally. Watershed basis is the way to do some testing, so it's not just Milford on their own going out there and spending $55,000, but all your neighbors doing testing and compiling that data together in order to make a logical and legal argument with the regulators that maybe those numbers that they've given you may not be correct, and that you maybe get a much lower number. So, you need to work with the data that's out there. There's still legal challenges going on, so don't take this as a done deal, but it's pretty far down the road, and so if you've got a challenge legally, you need to have some science and some good answers behind you. The other thing is to try to engage the private sector as much as you can, so as new development or redevelopment goes on, trying to get them to do water quality improvements on the site, and maybe a public-private partnership where they build and maybe you maintain. So, there's things out there you can get the costs down, and I think you can get it down somewhat, I don't know what that number is yet. And then finally, you know, people ask me a lot, do we have to do this, all right? And what's the implications if we don't? Well, the federal government is a pretty powerful group, and the Clean Water Act specifically gives them authority to make sure that these permits are, you comply with the permits. They can come out and audit your permit documents, your rules and regulations, and the work you're doing anytime they want. They can then give you, if they find things they don't like, you're in violation, they can then give you an administrative order, which is pretty, let's say if they audit you, it's pretty often that you'll get some kind of administrative order. That's usually an increased schedule, asking you to do things a little bit quicker and report back to them. It can be costly, because it also has a lot of documentation. They also have the authority to fine, fine communities $25,000 to $25,000 a day for violation, and a violation can be anything as simple as you didn't do inspections that you were supposed to do. So, you need to be really careful that once you do your plan, and you're doing that, that you're in compliance. We don't see a lot of dollar fines, mostly it's the administrative orders, but there have been two recently in Massachusetts, totally $130,000 in fines, so it's real. I think our current administration may be slowing down enforcement, but it's still happening every day. I think there's 17 stormwater violations so far this year by EPA, and the fines that they put out there, even for one, for Pennsylvania DOT, it was $750,000. So, take it seriously, they do have the authority to do this, and I think we just wanted to give you some context of why we're asking for the $400,000 and what it will be used for. Thank you.
If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented to vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 to be utilized by the Milford Highway Surveyor and/or the Town Engineer for any and all items required to ensure that the town remains in compliance with the Environmental Protections Agency's Stormwater General Permit for Stormwater Discharges from Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems. MS4 is Phase Two of the permit. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article 31.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be utilized by the Highway Surveyor and Town Engineer for any and all items required to perform a Phase Two Inspection Evaluation Report Analysis and Design work for the Milford Pond Dam, also known as Cedar Swamp Pond Dam. As referenced in Phase One Inspection Evaluation Report performed and written by Westin and Sampson Engineers, Incorporated, July 11, 2016.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be utilized by the Milford Highway Surveyor and Town Engineer for any and all items required to perform a Phase Two Inspection Evaluation Report Analysis and Design work for the Milford Pond Dam, also known as Cedar Swamp Pond Dam, as referenced in the Phase One Inspection Evaluation Report performed and written by Westin and Sampson Engineers, Inc., dated July 11, 2016. Does the Finance Committee have recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Chris Foley.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. The need for this article is to perform the work related to items listed in the Phase One Inspection Evaluation Report, which includes hydraulic analysis, topographic and bathymetric survey, and a concrete assessment by structural engineer designers needed. Specifications and bidding procedures, these items will generate additional information, which in turn will provide more detail of what needs to be repaired, replaced, or mortified. This information will be used to produce an accurate cost for the construction phase of the project. I ask for your support on this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried unanimously. Article 32. Mr. Brederelli.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be used for the purpose of replacing the front stairs at the Milford Town Library, including any necessary repairs or replacement of the railings and associated structures and elements.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be used for the purpose of replacing the front stairs at the Milford Town Library, including any necessary repairs or replacement of the railings and associated structures/elements. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Brederelli.
Mr. Moderator. As the Chairman of the Finance Committee mentioned earlier on in this meeting, there is an urgent need to repair these and replace them before winter starts. Every winter, we're faced with the problem of pieces of the stairs coming off, and we're forced to put orange cones up. You can imagine the potential liability issue that this brings on, so it would be a good thing to do this appropriation so we can begin the work as soon as possible. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 33. Mr. Calery.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members. I move that the town vote to authorize the expenditure of the available balance and fund 2696 Comcast Verizon PEG Access Account for the purpose of performing upgrades and coordinates with the PEG Access agreements with the town.
Motion made in second of the town vote to authorize the expenditure of the available balance and fund 2696 Comcast Verizon PEG Access Account for the purpose of performing upgrades in accordance with the PEG Access agreements with the town. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Calery.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This one will go back into the district and will help fund our network and infrastructure. I look for your support.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 34. Mr. D'Lucio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee for general expenses.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee for general expenses. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. D'Lucio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. The Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee has been in existence for over a year now with no funding. Not being experts in some of the initiatives, the committee recognized that there may be need for some funding to support these efforts. They include consultant fees associated with the development and publication of the Town Meeting Procedural Guide and Town Meeting Handbook, the development of educational videos, additional audio system improvements, and the development of periodic mini-surveys. Please note that this funding request is an appropriation request and not an annual budget request. As an appropriation, the balance is carried across fiscal years and may be sufficient for more than one year. We won't know until we get deeper into the initiatives I have mentioned. Last but not least, but important, is the committee's requirement to communicate with you and provide you information in a timely manner as you can be better equipped to make informed decisions. To satisfy this requirement, we make use of email as much as possible. However, for those town meeting members who have not provided their email addresses to the town clerk, the committee uses US Mail, which involves the cost of envelopes and mailing labels. Up to now, these costs have been paid for by donations. Copying and postage costs are paid from existing town hall accounts. In order to reduce the US mailings and associated costs to as close to zero as possible, the committee, in cooperation with the town clerk, has an ongoing initiative to solicit town meeting member email addresses. Initially, there were approximately 60 members who had not provided their email addresses to the town clerk for a variety of reasons. We have now reduced that number to approximately 30. For those in attendance who have not done so, please see the town clerk after the meeting. For those at home, email the committee at tmsic@townofmilford.com. In conclusion, I remind you that the TMSIC is your committee working for you to improve the town meeting experience. Please show your support for the committee by voting favorably on this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Wheelock.
The Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee, responsible for such great ideas as possibly having to shut down at 10 o'clock, which conceivably contributed to diminished conversations about issues in the previous 20 minutes before 10 o'clock, and thankfully, we agreed to stay here tonight instead of having to come back a different day, which in itself was just a logical conclusion that should have happened without Town Meeting Study Committee bringing that proposal to this group previously, having that proposition passed, and now being constricted by those guidelines. Really, there's problems with Town Meeting that need to be fixed, and they don't need $5,000, and they don't need the Town Meeting Study Improvement Committee to fix them. It requires the people in the chairs to decide to stand up and speak out on issues that matter to them, to be more informed, and to oppose ideas, even if it means drawing attention to yourself and speaking against the flow of issues. Vote no on this $5,000, because there's other ways to come up with money. You want to know one way that there's money? If Sierra Naturals gets to sell pot, they can start contributing their $260,000, is it $225,000 a year for five years, community host agreement. If you're looking for, if the Town Meeting Study Group wants some money, possibly hit those guys up. Hit up any number of other people, don't use my tax dollars to send me mailings. Town Hall already sends mailings related to Town Meeting, which is good enough. The 30 people who don't want to be on your email list don't want to be on your email list, okay? Don't pressure people into getting on the email list who have known about the email list ask on your side and are choosing to not be on the email list. Say no to this $5,000 proposal, basically say no to the Town Meeting Study Group, and come up with other solutions to Town Meeting problems.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article 35. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1.35 million to be added to the Town Stabilization Account, funds 8300 and 8325.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,350,000 to be added to the Town Stabilization Account Funds, number 8,300 and 8,325. Is the Finance Committee supporting this, Mr. Moore?
Yes, favorable. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you'll notice that this number's a little bit higher than we usually do, and the reason for that is actually Article 18, the Fire Truck Engine One. We had $650,000 allocated for that as part of our capital plan when the fire chief told us that he could wait one more year for Engine One, but it's definitely going to come up next year. We decided, instead of spending that money on something else, we're going to go ahead and save that as well, because we're going to need it next year for it. So, that's why this number's a little bit higher, and we're also saving because we have $40 million for stormwater.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 36. Selectman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and town meeting members. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $1,500,000 from the excess and deficiency account to be utilized to offset the operating, the capital, and the debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year 2019.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $1,500,000 from the excess and deficiency account to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year 2019. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article seeks to appropriate the sum of $1.5 million from free cash to offset the tax rate. This continues Milford's longstanding commitment to offset the tax burden by applying free cash against local amount to be raised through the levy. Our overall financial strategy for the year was to maintain an excess levy capacity figure of $3.2 million. Applying $1.5 million of free cash will not only accomplish our desired outcome, but will in fact exceed our targeted goal for the year, fiscal year 2019. I urge your support for this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. It was the pleasure of the meeting. Move that we dissolve the warrant. Motion made in second to dissolve the warrant. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Please, monitors, please bring forward your attendance sheets.